Again, the audience and those on YouTube. Today is Monday, October 2nd. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting at this time. I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll get right on into our agenda. The next one is an action item. This is claims, board orders, and junior college. And I think we had, how many junior college, four?
Payments, three.
Three. And then we had four board orders?
Uh, there's more than four.
Is there more?
Yeah.
I just had one question, Rita, that I don't know is coded right. Check to Terry Guestron is for groomer shed. And that's for the road department, isn't it?
No, that's no groomers. That's where they keep the grater, Donley.
That's a groomer.
It's a groomer, yeah, it's in Donley. It's not road department.
I was, I had that same one written down, Al.
Well, they, they have plow trucks in there, too. Unless I'm thinking of a different building.
It might be, but I'm not sure.
It's the one right behind.
Yeah, right behind the feed store.
Yeah, I thought that was all road department. There's a groomer in there?
I believe so, yes.
That's what Larry, Larry told me. They keep their groomer in there.
I've never heard that either.
I thought the groomer was over by, um... Jesus, this one's my, no business, yeah, no business.
It's not a claim that I made up. It's one that was submitted to me. So, I would have to go back and look to make sure who submitted it. And then I can tell you whether they coded theirs correctly. I believe I've received them from Mickey as well. So, it might have been road department that submitted it.
Well, I, I'm like Sherri, I thought that was all road department riddled and the groomers grew over on the other side of the lake. So, I just thinking, you might want to dig, dig that one out, you know?
Am I, the only question I had on that was the amount. It seemed excessive, but...
We're spending a lot of money there. That's the conversation of whether we should be building a building on one of our properties.
So, we had eight board orders.
Yeah, they're...
Um, that started out, Neil, when I first came on, it was around fifty-two hundred a year. And I think it's a four-bay facility behind. And then we were able to plug in trucks, plow trucks during the winter. But we also pay that power bill.
I noticed the power bill on the...
And now it's gone up quite a bit. And both Sherri and I talked about, we need to find a piece of ground up there. Eventually, build our own facility.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just put a pretty good-sized pole barn that you put equipment in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just...
And you can drive back in there if you ever go up there and drive back in there and take a look at it. I think we've got a lot of ten-wheelers in there with sweet plows on the front that they use. But I'm sure there's probably some graders in there, too, now.
Power bill comes in as Donley groomer.
The groomers grew over on the other side of the lake. That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, that's just how it comes in, so...
Well, if you could dig that one out, I think that...
Ask Larry, he, he had more information than I bet.
On the valley, on the pickleball, so it shows that we cut a check, but did that just go into the reserve fund for them? Or did we actually give them a check?
They're coming to pick up the check today. It hasn't been cut yet.
They've been doing a lot of work over there.
And the way we, if I remember right, and correct me wrong, Doug, but we wanted them to do, to run the construction of that, not us. Otherwise, it's going to be through public license work and all that kind of stuff. So, we...
My understanding, it was just a contribution to the Valley County Pickleball Club utilizing Arpa dollars.
Yep.
Thank you for the clarification. I didn't have any other questions, so...
Hey, if there's no more questions, I entertain a motion to approve the claims, board orders, and junior college.
So, moved?
Second. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Come on up, Rita.
Jeremy, thank you for these. That's awesome. You're a rock star. What? We had them all along?
All we had commissioners was just the microphones that were just sitting on the table.
Look at that, wireless.
Those are awesome.
You have my, you have my stamp down there, Al?
Nope.
You gotta be here for ten years first.
Talk to Rita about that, Doug.
Just ten years anniversary.
You guys almost done?
Sherri's, Sherri's faster than me.
Yeah, I used to be a banker and sign a thousand things a day.
You might be able to read your signature.
Soon they got them.
Yeah, read mine. Just got, just FYI, I'm gonna leave my car here this week in the parking lot. So, is there anything going on that I should park it somewhere specific? Okay.
I would ask her for the keys in case we need to go somewhere.
Taking down the mileage. I am gonna be on vacation. Off my phone, no contact. Uh-oh. It's a good feeling some days.
Okay, we're gonna keep right on going. We got a lot on the agenda today. The next, these are all action items. The next was the meeting minutes of September 18th. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Did, I sound a little correction, so...
Do we need, uh, did you get it corrected?
I did, Mr. Chairman, I did, Commissioner.
Do I need a motion to approve those?
Make a motion to approve the meetings of September 18th.
Moved in second and on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, the next one on the agenda is Green Gate Parking Lot Contract for Repairs. And I think that was in our packet.
Yep. All that.
It was a small amount.
With Kessler Construction.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Green Gate Parking Lot Contract for Repairs with Kessler and not to exceed...
Seconded.
It's eleven hundred dollars.
Eleven hundred, yeah, I thought that was...
Where did you guys see the eleven hundred?
That was up in the amount. Oh, let's see, what's being...
Oh, it's very, underneath termination, compensation, not to exceed one hundred, one thousand one hundred dollars. Hey, we got a motion in a second to approve this service agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I thought the department head was gonna be present to present that, but I will get it printed off and bring it up.
Okay, next agenda item is also an action item. This is to approve the, oh, come on up, Robin, is that it?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I don't know. I think there's a, there's one more. Actually, this one is for the Green Gate.
Okay, the next action item is the iron works, iron networks request to install fiber connection in support of 911. Jeremy, come on up, what's this about?
Morning, commissioners. If you call a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago now, we signed the iron contract to have them act as an ISP for when they eventually bring fiber up the highway through the valley. This is for, in the meantime, because all of the 911 centers are moving towards the sort of multi-county consolidation. This is for iron to con, they're gonna, they contract with Zipley independently. They provide the circuit, they'll pay for it. This is the one I was telling you about that they get a grant funding to pay for it every two years. So, it'll be a two-year cycle. They will contract with Zipley. Zipley will install the circuit, iron will pay for it, and it will allow us to, um, sounds like midsummer is when they're gonna start going, well, early April. April, May is when they're gonna start actually putting the equipment in the four counties that are, that are gonna be in our little area. So, this will allow our, uh, them to connect us to Payette County for that 911 system. So, nine, uh, Payette County will be the primary 911 piece app. We will be the secondary. And then Adams County and Washington County, I think, will be satellites off of the, to the primary and the backup. So, those are the four counties that...
And this doesn't cost us anything?
This doesn't cost us anything right now. Like I said, they're getting, they're, they're getting this, they're paying for this through an ISPCC grant every two years. And if you remember last, last time, I, when we signed that iron contract, with the caveat that they haven't not gotten the funding every two years. They've been doing this for a while in other counties. But there's no guarantee that they will always get it every two years. So, that's, that's just the one big caveat that if for some crazy reason something happens, we'd have to take on that expense if they did not, if they weren't able to renew that grant two years from now.
Does that change when broadband comes down?
Yes, so when they, once they get it through, we would, they would just be our ISP and they would just charge us whatever monthly rate we negotiate.
And I did speak with iron. They were waiting on the state's contract. And they signed that, I think, two weeks ago. So, now they are fully ready to begin construction.
I was talking, I was speaking, wasn't a call with, uh, is it Creach? Payette County or Washington County, their sheriff? Anyways, they just got the grant signed to a few days, like about the same timeframe, a week or two ago, to start this whole project. And that's what I think. Hopefully, if we get everything moving, May, June, but...
I guess my only concern is, you know, we're not allowed in future commissioners.
So, here would, here would be the, here would be the drawbacks. We wouldn't be obligated to take that over. Problem is, is if 911 is running over it.
About half.
It would be a pain to move it to something else. And I'm not saying that's gonna happen. I just wanna make sure that, you know, full transparency, that that...
It's all about when broadband is...
No matter how small of a chance it is, it is a chance.
It's all about when broadband gets here. And they're supposedly starting in Star and coming our direction and then heading to the port. So, we should see broadband anyway within eighteen months here in Cascade. So, I mean, we're fairly assured that, you know, broadband will be here in time in order to take over within that two-year period.
And they'll probably get this grant renewed in two years if we, if it's not here. But again, just in, in, in spirit of full transparency, I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that that, there was that tiny chance that that grant does not get renewed two years from now.
Do you have anything for us to sign today?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. Can you, do you mind bringing that up just for a minute before we vote on this?
And this is just the service order, um, saying that, hey, iron is gonna contract with Zipley to do this, to put in the circuit. They're gonna, it's gonna, Zipley's gonna charge them fifteen hundred, fifty dollars, but they're, but they're paying for it, so ours is...
So, Sherri, are they starting?
But we'll still have Zipley in case this all comes tumbling down.
Yes, our main connection will still...
That's my concern, Doug.
We'll still have something if we did need to, for some reason, move.
So, then, Doug, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we approve the iron networks request service order.
I will second.
And I'm assuming we all sign this. Got a motion second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I think we all three should sign that.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jeremy, anything else? You gonna?
Yes, I'm on the next one.
Are you on this computer arch one? Next agenda item is approve the FY24 Computer Arch Contract. I think it's up forty-six thousand, six fifty-five. We do have a cover letter, so everybody's had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, so the, the reasoning is, even though we're moving to Tyler, because of the timing and the transition, we kinda needed both systems for a little bit. So, we had reached out and plus, we still have civil for the whole year because we didn't, there was so much going on that we didn't have time to get something in the CIP Committee for civil. So, we'll do that for fiscal year twenty-five, uh, for sure. So, I reached out to our account rep and said, and, you know, listed all the things like financial and like jury, like, hey, we're only gonna use these for like three months. Can we have the contract adjusted? And they sent, essentially, they came back and said that we, they refused to do a shorter term, that we either pay for the whole year or nothing. Even though some of the stuff we're literally gonna use for two months.
We can't shut it off sooner.
It's, it was either the whole year or nothing, which...
Did we budget for this?
I did not anticipate them refusing to do a shorter term. So, I budgeted for what I thought our computer arts usage was. But because they came back and said, no, we won't do a shorter term, you have to pay for the whole thing or not, or nothing, I only have quarter of this or half of this.
And the twenty thousand, is that what that is?
Yes. I spoke, I don't know if Clerk Miller wants to jump in. I spoke with him about eating this somewhere else.
Unfortunately, we're probably gonna have to take it out of general fund reserve, Mr. Chairman.
So, that would be twenty-six, sixty, fifty-five out of general fund reserve? Plus the twenty that he's got in his budget.
Correct.
That what you're thinking, Doug?
Yes, sir.
So, I think we should make that a part of the motion.
This also will give us time to make sure that we have all of the backup documentation that we need, download anything that we need.
Yeah, so this'll give us access to their entire software suite for another, another year, all the way until, um, September of twenty-four.
If everybody's good with this, entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the FY24 CIA, CAI contract.
With the caveat of twenty thousand coming from Durham's IT budget with the remaining coming from the general fund. And I will second that motion.
If the motion's second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything to sign there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Lines are all three different. You got a fancy stamp, you know?
Yeah, today is ten-two.
You have to be here ten years before you have the privilege of doing that.
I don't know if it's a privilege or not. You didn't get a public defender contract from Mike?
That mean, means you or I won't get that, Sherri, is that what you're saying?
He's been wanting out for a while.
Means you or I won't get that.
Probably not.
Yeah, he just...
Here's here, he used to bug me about that, and it's like... And you've already agreed with the rates for these guys?
Yes, sir.
There's one of them that doesn't have a rate.
That would be a hundred dollars a month, Commissioner Mopkin with Brian Neville.
Is he related to Judge Neville?
He is. That's his son.
That's his son, huh?
Yeah.
Cool. Anything else, Jeremy?
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great day. Next agenda item is an action item, and we've got three of these. So, this is assigning conflict public defender contract, Brian Neville, Aaron Hooper, and John DeFranco. And, um, I think it's anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five an hour. Is that correct, Doug?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's, that is correct. The only one that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars is for Mr. Aaron Hooper. And all that he is willing to handle is felony cases. Uh, Mr. DeFranco and Mr. Neville are willing to handle the misdemeanor cases as well as any other civil matters related to guardian cases or child protection cases in which an additional attorney is required. They have been reviewed by prosecuting attorney's office. This is the last year that we will be entering into any conflict public defender contracts. And I'll stand for any questions.
So...
Oh, is that because it's going back to the state?
State is handling these and, yeah, any type of conflict cases, contracts would be determined by the state now.
Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the conflict public tender contract with Brian Neville, Aaron Hooper, and John DeFranco.
And I would like to add in the motion that Brian Neville's is at a hundred dollars an hour because it is not reflected on the contracts. And then I'll second that motion if you'll add that to the motion.
Yep.
Catch. Yeah, oh, there it is. Hey, we got a motion in a second to sign all three public defender contracts. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Did you write in the Neville's?
I did.
Okay, we're gonna keep right on going. Um, find this. Our next agenda item is assign the Valley County Recycle Roof Change Order. Thought you sent this to us, didn't you?
That's in our packet.
Ah, where is it?
Edition of the walls, it says recycle center, sidewall chain.
Putting walls on it. It's the reason for putting walls on, just keep snow from drifting in.
Yeah.
And Scott, did it end up being two walls or three walls?
Four walls.
Four walls, all of them.
Yeah, um, the north and south ones will be full walls all the way up with the entrances we'll take. And, um, only fencing we will put back up is just to tie the gates into the building for security. And then the east and west walls will have, will be all the way up with a three-foot opening at the top so we can kinda in the summer get some ventilation in there and stuff for them.
So, this change order adds an increase of thirty-nine, one sixty-six?
Yes.
To a total of four?
Forty-five, one sixty-six.
One sixty-six.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve to accept the change order and add four walls to the recycling center for thirty-nine thousand, one sixty-six.
Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Good job on this.
It'd be a great structure when it's done.
Yeah, they got enough concrete, it'll never move. I think you need steel up here.
I'm just gonna start this week.
Haven't even seen it yet.
Weather here.
When they did their back building, they have...
Anything else, Scott?
Now, we have, um...
My goodness.
Oh, the propane?
Yeah, we have, uh, let's see, which one is this one? I have propane and I also have, uh, the roof, um...
Let's do the roof next, would that be okay?
Yeah.
Our next agenda item, this is professional service agreement with Dallas McKellips for a roof over the Village of Ground shop.
That was not very expensive.
Actually, the office is what it's for, yeah.
I was surprised that, low cost, so...
And this was for three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for the whole project.
Where's this at?
My office.
Over that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do I need a motion to approve that?
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, our service agreement with Dallas McKellips.
I will second that.
Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And Scott, the propane contract that we have, that is what the bid was, the thirty-two cents per gallon?
Yeah.
Isn't that the one we...
Who's that?
Yeah, and now this is the final contract.
We approved the bid, now we're doing the contract.
Okay. That was a request for proposal. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the propane services for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Just looking a minute here.
With Valleywide.
Uh, yeah, Valleywide.
Exhibit B, do we have exhibit B?
What's that?
Oh, there it is. Here we go. I found it. So, we got a motion, yeah, everything's good.
Actually, I gave you the wrong contract.
Did?
Yeah, there, I've got two of the same.
Well, we gotta make sure it's the right one.
Yeah.
But it's, it's exhibit B that determines the price and it also has a tank rental on it.
Mm-hmm.
And then I know somewhere in the bid, there was also no other charges, no hazardous waste fee or anything else could be added to it.
Yeah. Exhibit A is attached to it, is what it is. It has all, it has all the pricing.
There we go, yep.
All the different tanks and everything, yep.
Actually, what you guys just previously signed was the propane bid.
So, now we have a contract, we're official now, right?
Yeah. This is the one for the roofing.
Hey, so we got a motion in second on the table to approve the, um, Valleywide propane contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything for signing to that?
Yeah, you already signed one for propane.
Oh, I did?
Yes, that's what everyone was...
Nice.
This one has two, it has the contract with the roofer and then it has the, um, professional service agreement. So, it has two places to actually sign.
Jeremy, is there another Computer Arts Harris Master Agreement letter to sign? It's on there twice.
It just got added twice, Commissioner Mopkin, my apologies.
No worries. I think we did that one.
We have the data on it from the blog that I...
I don't see that in here. Is it not in here?
Your art's one?
The other one is...
It just got added twice.
Uh, I got it.
Let's get our office scan, mail these to us. We can have them for retention purposes, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will. I'll get them sent to the contractors in a few moments.
That'd be great.
Let me get that one.
Okay. It's like they all have their signatures on them, so they're executed. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, have a great day. Thank you, Scott. Have a great day. You don't have anything else?
Nope, that should be it.
Okay, so we're gonna go right on down the last item on this agenda. It's still an action item. This is to sign the juvenile detention agreement between Valley County and Ada County. And the rate is two hundred and sixteen dollars per day. The juvenile is in their detention center. Is that, what was it last year?
That's the same as last year.
Same as last year? Good. That's cool.
Hope we have fewer juveniles in there. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the juvenile detention agreement between Valley County and Ada County. Rate of two hundred and sixteen dollars per day.
Is that a second?
Check at that. Oh, there it is.
It's been moved a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So this is when Ada has ju- juveniles up here?
We send our juveniles down there. We don't have a juvenile detention center up here.
Oh, that's right, we did wave it to. Yep, yep. That's ours going down there.
We used to have one for Canyon County?
We did.
Is that one gonna come through?
At this point in time. I apologize, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. I was trying to get them prepared. This was the one that came to my attention, but I do think that the Commissioners need to determine if we need to have both locations. It does make sense on occasion to have an agreement with both facilities down in the valley and we will get one. We'll begin working on one to present to the Commissioners at a later date for Canyon County as well.
Great, great. I think it's good to spread our risk out. It's kind of like a landfill. Okay, we're done with that. We'll move on to page two. And this is also an action item. This is a discussion decision regarding the design of the plaque for E O C building recognizing aiming Patty Bowlin Emergency Operations Center. I'm not sure. I thought Rich was in charge of this.
Mr. Chairman, that responsibility is on the clerk's office and we were doing some research and what we really need is a determination from the Commissioners of how much money they want to expend on this. We checked locally and really, we don't have any local companies that will do a nice last, a long lasting plaque. So we did get some bids or some prices for a bronze plaque, which is approximately four thousand dollars, or an aluminum plaque, which is approximately two thousand dollars. So we really need to get an idea from the Commissioners of, you know, what, what kind of design do we want and the cost associated with that. So I guess where I'm getting at with my rambling is just kind of a not to exceed a certain amount of money. And then we will continue to get designs, present to the Commissioners at a later date. We can, in fact, get this done.
I think it needs to be a bronze plaque.
I agree.
I would make a motion that we approve up to five thousand, just to make sure we cover all costs.
Forty-five hundred, five thousand, something like that.
So I would move that we approve up to forty-five hundred for the Patty Bowlin plaque for the E O C.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Doug, Onette, they did bronze plaques there, all the schools in McCall. We built all the schools.
I can find out.
Might check with them. History might be back there too far, but. When her task.
Thank you.
We built those in nineteen hundred and you were.
Most of those were made at Idaho Trophy. But I see a guy down on State Street that does brass plaques too, and then he puts them on rocks. So there's probably a few guys around that does that.
Was it forty-five hundred dollars? I apologize.
Yeah, forty-five hundred.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna keep right on going. We're only seven minutes behind. Next, these are all action items. Sign the fair housing proclamation. Gotta find it.
You want a copy of it? Or is it in your pocket?
Uh, we have it in our pocket. Do you want me to read it? Or do you wanna read it?
So a bunch of whereas's. Do you want it read?
Well, I'll just make it really short. How's that sound? Therefore, after all these whereas's, I, Hilton Hasbrook County Commissioner of Valley County, do hereby proclaim April two thousand twenty-four to be fair housing month.
And I do wanna let you know, I edited that to say Commissioner Chairman instead of County Commissioner. Is that okay with you?
That's fine with me, yeah.
Okay, and then I also.
You can put all three of us on there if you want.
Okay.
We, the Valley County Commissioners, something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. I will, I'll revise that.
Unless these guys don't want to.
I am happy to.
I think we should add all three of us, we, Valley County Commissioners, or however you wanna word that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make the motion that we approve the fair housing proclamation.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then you just write it up however you want and bring it back.
Okay.
This is probably one of the most important proclamations.
Yeah, I agree. And it, they do, CD or Idaho Department of Commerce does recommend, we actually proclaim it every year. They're only requiring us to proclaim it for twenty twenty-four, but I, I agree with you. I think it's important to.
You too.
You know, we probably ought to establish some kind of a file folder with all the proclamations that we're supposed to do every year, because there's a bunch.
There, yeah.
So that we don't forget.
There's a lot of them.
Proclamations, resolutions. They're on a calendar. What? Are you putting that on your calendar?
They put all those together?
Or. Or on our calendar? How do we do that? How do we track those?
So the only ones that we, I guess this is the only one that I'm aware of that needs to be done on an annual basis. The other proclamations that we receive are usually, usually brought to the Commissioners by other organizations. As the malnutrition one that was presented. Yeah, mental health month. Typically, we get contacted by the agencies that are, I guess, responsible for getting that message out. And I, I don't know if we necessarily need to make a calendar of them, but we could i- if the Commissioners are requesting that.
Yeah, I could. Would it be in the, just in the records if Gabby and I like worked on it?
Yeah.
It would be in the minutes of all the meetings over the years that we've had, but the other question I had, Doug, is who determines if we fly the flag, say that five times, at half mast? Is that someone that calls and says, hey, lower your mask?
So we're, uh, we're signed up with the state of Idaho, typically the state of Idaho. The governor's office will put out a notice. There's also if, the White House sends those messaging out. It's the facilities who are responsible for that. I believe that Scott Klingon does get emails from the White House, from the federal government and from the state government when it is determined to put the flags at half mast.
And Mackenzie, if I was to put this on the Commissioner's calendar, so we're doing it in October for April. Is that, there's a big lag time there?
Um, I could have waited, but it is part of, so part of the C D B G requirement is a progress report. So I just, I kinda wanted to get it done and have it sent and then I do need to publish it in the newspaper and then put it on the bulletin board. So I just thought it'd be a good idea to get it done early.
I'm putting it on my calendar also.
Okay, well, I think we got that done. So let's move on down. This one is to sign the Idaho Community Development Block Grant Program Request for Funds. I'll let you explain that one.
So this is just, we already approved the hundred and forty thousand that we sent to Yellow Pine Water Users Association. And now we're requesting reimbursement from the C D B G grant. And then we still have ten thousand left to request reimbursement for.
Need to put different letters on that grant.
Not the C D B G. Yeah, it's been fun getting that one out.
I'll make the motion that we sign the Idaho Community Development Block Grant Program Request for Funds.
Second.
Move to second on favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Come on up. And then you want us to approve the progress report?
Yes.
C V D, that's just.
Gotta put that G.
I think you might need to get those little sign here.
C D B G has been in place long before we equated it to anything else.
Probably true.
You did the rest. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go on down. The next one is the C B D, C D B G Progress Report, which we have in hand, and it looks like you're right on schedule. You have the fair housing assessment. Is that due in September too?
Um, so I actually completed that with Annette and that didn't need to be signed just between me and her.
Okay. But it's completed.
Yes, that's done. And then a lot of this was done back when we actually were first awarded this grant in twenty twenty-one. As you'll see going through there.
And you already published the Disabilities Act?
Yes.
What do you have left to do? What about?
Oh, wait, no, today, I put it oh nine twenty-three, because we're also doing that today.
Are we?
Yeah, then I, that's the last action item. And then I have to publish that and post it on our website and post it on the bulletin board.
So do we have the resolution here?
We do. It's the last item on my little action item list.
Okay, so then I need a motion to approve the C D B G Progress Report.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Would you say on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Nothing to sign there?
There is.
There is? And are you doing the Parks and Rec closeout too? Okay. Give you enough room to do it. Okay, so we'll move on that one next. This is to sign the Idaho Department of Parks and Rec Request for Reimbursement Closeout Report. I don't know if we have that one.
Lawnmower.
Well, that's the lawnmower? All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Request for Reimbursement Closeout Report for four thousand two hundred and forty dollars from Idaho Parks and Recreation.
Second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Busy girl. Tell me when I don't.
Good job. Okay, now we're gonna go down and look at the resolution and I really don't know where that one is.
Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two, Americans with Disability.
Oh, there we go.
There it is. Whereas.
Okay, so lots of whereas's. Be further resolved in accordance with the requirements of Title Two of the American with Disabilities Act of nineteen hundred? Wow. Valley County will not discriminate against qualified individuals with disabilities on the basis of disability in its service programs or activities. I will make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Because it's important.
Okay.
Thanks for all your hard work. I'm sure nobody is telling you that often enough.
Oh, it's great.
Been a little overwhelmed lately.
All of us are overwhelmed.
I know.
True statement.
It's nice sometimes.
Thanks, Mackenzie.
How come you don't have a stamp? Mr. Clerk?
I don't know.
You should get a stamp. Okay, our next agenda item, thanks, Mackenzie, is an action item. This is the River Bottom Subdivision Final Plan and Road Development Agreement for Tackinen Estates. Cindy, come on up. So I guess, I'm not quite sure. I need your help on this. We had some issues with this. A person that lived along Gold Fork that lost her eas- or access to her property. Did that get resolved in this subdivision? So what is the plan there?
So that, we'll start with the, the River Bottom. Would you like me to show you on the screen?
Okay, you wanna do River Bottom first?
Yeah, that would be the one with the access issue.
Yeah, let's look at that. I wanna make sure that everybody's been.
She didn't lose her access. The access is actually from another parcel legally. There was an old road on this parcel.
So has that been deeded or is that a, how did you handle that one? We'll wait for you to get it out.
The property owners is here and for their information, the reason this topic was brought up is a, a letter that was submitted to the Board of County Commissioners.
Cindy, you're gonna need to move that microphone.
All right.
So I'll repeat that. The, the property owners are here and, and they want a chance to talk to the Board of County Commissioners.
That's not the issue though.
But the reason.
Just, just a sec.
Reason this topic is, is being brought up for your information is because of a letter that was submitted to the board.
Well, come on up to the mic, please, sir, or whoever's gonna represent you. Come on up to the mic. We need your name and your home. I don't need your address, just your home that you live in, your town. Sorry, your town that you live in.
Okay. My name's Jenna Alessi. I'm the trustee for C two J Trust. I live between here and Boise.
Can't wait till we get better broadband? These maps are hard to load.
Slow but steady.
All right.
All right.
We're getting there. Right in here. Eight. So, I don't know. It's not working.
Buddy, get off your internet so we can get it up.
So as soon as this starts working. My computer will get there faster.
You're the one that's eating all the internet.
Oh? Not yet. It might be seen.
It doesn't want to move.
Huh?
It doesn't want to move, does it?
Just, I'll try a different page. What is it, it's C2J?
C2J Trust.
Give me the HDMI cord, I've got it. What?
Can you flip yours up on the screen?
Why not, yeah, give me the HDMI cord.
So the River Bottom subdivision is at the corner, is on Gold Fork Road. And Tackinon Lane used to go through the parcel, you can see where, right there, that used to be Tackinon Lane. It was vacated by the Board of County Commissioners a number of years ago. And I can't quite see the three, that piece there. Used to use Tackinon Lane for access. It actually has an easement through the much larger parcel. Even though that access hasn't been created yet.
Can I clarify with it? Can I clarify?
Cindy, is there something on a plat that shows that easement?
No, I believe it's just a written easement.
That's not true.
Okay, so Jenna, what we'll do, go ahead, kind of give us your side of it.
Well, I feel like I'm being ambushed a little bit.
Oh, no, 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 no.
This wasn't the mission we were here for today, so I'll address this as best as I can, because I wasn't prepared to bring their title showing the easement for that property through Lumis's. We've addressed this issue at least twice now in front of the commissioners. They tried to make Tackinon Lane a public road. That was denied, because my grandfather, back in the day, allowed easement through this during the winter time because they couldn't keep Barker Plowed open, so.
Right.
She has never had an easement through our property. On occasion, when they were having hard winters, we did allow her access through that property, but it is titled to the property around it that she has an easement to that property. As you see, it doesn't even touch our road. She's actually going through multiple properties to get to that road. Or to get to her house off of Tackinon when she was using it. So she does have a legal easement through Kristy Lumis's title on her property.
I believe that is, she's living on the daughter's land.
Correct.
So her...
It's one acre out of Kristy.
It is family land, it's the family.
Oh, her easement actually comes off either this road or, when I looked at the deed, I think it was down here.
Yes.
I actually addressed this with the lady. And there was nothing in writing anywhere that said that she had this.
Well, I'm assuming now she's got a prescriptive right of way, or prescriptive easement, being there so long?
She doesn't. No.
I was on the board when, with Gordon and I, when we, when we gave Tackinon back, we didn't felt like it was a county road and Lumis's, I think at that time, wanted it, not a county road.
Correct, because they have a loop that goes up and then Don Stone, which is also Lumis's, on the other end, and it goes through my aunt and uncle's property, so there's at least four property owners that this road goes through, not just ours, so it was, it is not a public road.
And if there is a prescriptive easement, that's not for us to determine?
No.
That's a court, that's a court case, if they choose to go that direction.
So the subdivision you guys are doing is the ground around this house, I'm assuming?
No, it's south.
Oh, it's south, across the road.
It's that blue box.
Oh, okay.
This is the... This is one of them, they're right there together, aren't they?
This is the River Bottom Ranch subdivision within the blue box.
Okay.
And there is a plat for three lots that range in size from four acres to 58.215 acres. You can see it on the screen.
Mm-hmm.
And Gold Fork Road goes along the east side.
Well, then the access for all those is?
Separate.
Directly off of Gold Fork Road.
They're all separate, correct.
Oh, yes, one stretch.
They all have frontage.
They all have frontage, so they all have their own drives.
Okay?
Okay?
So...
And they've met all the requirements for a final plat, Cindy?
They have met all the requirements for a final plat, I wrote you a motion.
Yes.
The only thing to discuss at this point is you had previously agreed to a road development agreement. And Jenna wants to talk about that.
So remind me, before we get to Jenna, what that agreement was?
That agreement was to receive, to give them a credit of $11,892 for the road right of way dedication along Gold Fork Road. And you are going to allow them to use that credit against their other two lot subdivision that we'll talk about next.
So there's no money being requested, they're just donating the road for, what'd you say, 70 foot?
Yeah, 35 feet from center for a 70 foot right of way.
70 foot right of way.
It's our minimum requirement for a public road.
But is this a, this is off Gold Fork?
Yes, Gold Fork Road.
Okay. And then Jenna, you wanted to talk about that?
I do. So, this whole process started years ago, we were literally a month away from getting this split as a family split under the old rules of larger than 20 acres and larger. So we have now gone through surveys and plat processes and engineering from Crestline and an additional year requiring groundwater monitoring to get those engineering requirements met. To the tune of $70,000 to split this property between siblings. We met with Planning and Zoning, we got, or the commissioners, we got the approval to have these splits designed or completed as they are, and upon submitting these final plats for signage, we get this new requirement that now we are being charged $6,000 per lot. And it's being somewhat hidden under the guise of, well, we're gonna now give you money for the acre of land that we're taking because our roadway now requires, instead of the 25 feet we've already dedicated, another 10 feet. So we're giving up a whole another acre of land. And it's like the 11th hour that we're now being told we're being charged $6,000 a lot, which I assure you was not part of this original process.
And you understand why that was asked as far as money for our road department to build, keep up Gold Fork Road and clear to the highway, that's, we ask every developer that?
So that's, I guess, part of the issue is that we're not developers. This property is being split and maintained as it has been as farm ground. If I didn't have to split it, I wouldn't, but I can't split two pieces of property between three heirs. So we keep being called developers, but that is not the case, this property, they're large land, large lots. Some of it is going to sit as is and as has been for 140 years, we're trying to still raise cattle and train horses and now be required to spend the kind of money that a developer who's now putting 60 lots on these 80 acres, it's frustrating to say the least. And I feel like this is a, we're now almost being held hostage at the final stage of all the money that I've now put into it. We have to now put another $60,000 into it. Granted, you're saying you're gonna pay us for the property and that's just gonna go there, but that could have gone to taxes or other portions of this expense.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I say something?
Yep, just a second.
Hold on, you've gotta come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
There was a condition of approval on the CUP. It's Condition of Approval Number 12. And we are not actually taking cash from them, it's just the road dedication. We just documented it in this road development agreement.
Well, and under Conditional Use Permit, under Number 14, it says, "Prior to construction of any onsite improvements, the applicant shall meet with the Valley County Road Director and/or Board of County Commissioners to discuss offsite road improvements." Those improvements aren't being made, and basically, everything we do to our property now requires us to come before you, so there's no way any offsite improvements are gonna be made without your approval, but this was already granted that prior to improvements, this would have to be addressed, I feel like we're now addressing it in advance.
Well, I think it's a pretty fair trade to give us another 10 feet of right of way for that value, because 100 years from now, we're gonna need a bigger road through there because of development around it, I mean, that's just good planning, I feel like.
But you're taking the land and then you're requiring me to pay $6,000 for improvement to property?
No, 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 no.
There's, I got, there's no money changing hand, but you are still taking it under the guise of we're charging you $6,000 per lot on this split.
And we've hired an engineering firm to come up with that dollar figure, how much impact a lot does on a county road, and that's what they've come up with. Some of these subdivisions that have 20 or 30 or 40 lots, that's a big chunk of change.
Well, this is property that's still sitting as it has for the last 140 years. Granted, with a recorded boundary line now. This also was not in effect when we started this process, it's like you guys keep coming up with more and more for us to do, and it's taking longer and longer, and we're, like I said, 60, $70,000 in, and I feel like I can't I feel held hostage by this new requirement.
Well, one of the issues that we're trying to do is the, like the issue with one of your relatives that has a house that used to be on Tackinon Lane, we're trying to solve those issues before we sign the final plat, so that down the road, some years, it's not a family battle in court, figure out why I can't use that access or that, it's just good planning. And we ask everybody to do it, not just you guys. I think it's fair across the board, and yeah, it's kind of high, it's kind of expensive, but you know, if you talk to our road supervisor, that's, you know, he can now think about things we can do on Gold Fork or on that route to improve it.
So why would it not be, even if you're saying that this is, basically, it sounds like you're holding me to this, but it's now per lot, when there's actually already a lot sitting in each of these places, we've already been using this property. So why is it now six lots that I have to pay another $6,000 for instead of the two new lots down below and the one new lot up above?
You're paying it on three lots.
But we already have one lot sitting that we've been paying on for years, in fact, letting people use our roadway for years when they couldn't get to their property. I mean, I think we have also been more than fair.
And I think that's just being good neighbors, helping each other out. Cindy, you want to add anything else to that?
I'll state, you know, I'm sorry that you guys are getting caught in the middle of a transition. Valley County is transitioning, we are upgrading and improving our ordinance and our policies. And this is something that everyone is doing. If, you know, five years ago, you would have done it, it may have been different at that moment in time. But anytime you subdivide it, is that the the time that the ordinance is in place, this is the ordinance right now.
I feel like you've come up with the new ordinances along the way because of the amount of time that these requirements are taking to complete, and it's just more and more.
So the ordinances were originally in place for this exact same thing back 10, 15 years ago. So this is not new, it is being put back into place because of the inordinate costs that we are incurring in the road department.
When I sat down with Planning and Zoning to find out exactly what this was gonna cost me to do, and I assure you, I've been in this office a number of times because I didn't know what I was doing. Why is this not a fee that is discussed until I'm trying to get my final plat signed?
Well, I think there's lots of conditions of approval, I mean, if we have a high water table, we want you to go out and perk test it, that's a cost that you have to pay, that's just getting ahead of houses building in the floodplain and, you know, a basement's filling with water because we let them build in a piece of ground that has a high water table, those are all costs.
That would be an unexpected cost, this is one that sounds like you guys expected, but I didn't because I wasn't informed of it.
Well, upon your approval at Planning and Zoning, the condition of approval is that you would work with us on this road development agreement.
Right, it says prior to any onsite improvements, but no onsite improvements.
Well, we won't sign a final plat until everything is in place and designed according to our current ordinance. This is part of the ordinance. And so, I, I'm a little confused on what your, your confusion is, I mean, this was
I guess my confusion is the road development agreement that didn't come about until after I had met with, we had met with you the last time. This doesn't say there has to be a road development agreement signed and paid for prior to final approval, this says, "Prior to construction, the applicant shall meet with Valley County Road Director or the Board of Commissioners to discuss offsite road improvements."
Well, if we had 20 lots in there, we'd have to improve Gold Fork to handle the traffic. That's what this is supposed to.
But if you have 20 lots in there, it's likely somebody's actually selling those to build subdivisions, that's not what this is about.
If you think about it, anytime you split a piece of ground, you're developing it. So you're a developer. I know it's kind of hard to swallow that, but I had to go through the same thing for some of my sisters and brothers, one acre subdivision, so that they could get a lot on the ranch. Back then, there were, those fees weren't around, but now they are. We'd had to pay cash so we could do it, but we need to figure out a way to get funding to the road department because nobody wants a levy. And that's, this is part of that process.
And it's just long-term planning. I mean, these roads is, as your...
Which is why you're taking the roadway, the easement, I mean, that's...
That's all we're doing. We're not, we're not charging you cash.
But you're also paying us for the property that you're requiring to take either.
We're giving you credit for that. For a lot.
It's being used on the other subdivision, which we typically don't do.
No. In fact, there's been a lot of discussion about, because you're developing and we need that 35 foot right of way to protect future development through there, that that shouldn't even count towards your road development agreement, it should be a cash up for every lot. And we're still kind of going back and forth on that. So I think with the deal you got, it's a pretty good deal. So, yeah, you want to, you want to say something? Come on up, state your name, the town you live in, for the record.
I'm Jarrett Nelson, and I live right here. I guess I'm just curious, you guys are getting all this money, I mean, I haven't seen, but that grader down that road maybe once this year. I mean, there's lots of little things I'll point out. I mean, I live right there. This is for 35 years down the road, or 100 years? I mean, I guess that's been in our family for 150 years, you know? We wanted to do a family split in the beginning. It was just gonna be split, maybe we build a house on each one, but that's it. You know, now we're paying a lot of money. I'm just curious, I mean, you gonna hire some new guys for grading and doing all that, I mean, where's that at?
Well, that's the goal, is to build up enough revenue.
How, how long? If we're gonna put this money up front, okay? We're gonna put this money up front.
You're not putting money up front, I don't understand that.
What do you mean, we're having to pay, we're gonna have to pay the money, I mean, whatever, whether it comes from our property.
It's an easement dedication.
Okay.
It is not cash.
So the 11,000, even if you guys wanted to take that, you'll just take it and wouldn't give us any money anyway? The easement, is what I'm saying?
Well, we wouldn't sign your final plat because we require a county right of way through there. Because your neighbors down the road are gonna start developing, and we're gonna have X amount of lots of people using that road every day.
Right.
And so we've got to prepare to have the right of way so that someday when we get another hack.
We gotta help them guys prepare.
Hmm?
We gotta help them prepare. We're not gonna do a subdivision, but let's just deal, go with it. I'm gonna change.
Anything else, Jenny, you want to add?
No, sir.
Hey, everyone else good with this?
I would say, just for the record, that you had adopted the... I would say, just for the record, that you had adopted the capital improvement numbers January of 2023, and their public hearing was in March of 2023.
Our application was submitted well before that.
So if their application was before that, are we using the old numbers?
Right.
What are we using for the number?
Well, then they wouldn't get as much credit.
$6,104?
Yeah, so the fact that we're using the new numbers is also to your advantage.
Well, I hate to say, but this is not what it feels like, that it's to my advantage about this whole process. So I'll say that for the record.
Okay. Well, this time I would entertain a motion for the River Bottom Ranch subdivision in your packet.
I don't have that in front of me, let me grab it.
I can read it. I guess I'll make the motion to approve the final plat for River Bottom Ranch subdivision, except the wildfire mitigation plan and accept the dedic, the dedicate, dedicated, I think is the word, public road right-of-way dedicated for Gold Fork Road as shown on the final plat. Approve the road development agreement as presented with no monetary contribution. Authorize the chair to sign the road development agreement. Authorize the chair to sign the plat. This motion is made with the understanding that this subdivision fronts on Gold Fork Road, which is a public road, and that the Valley County Board of Commissioners have the sole discretion to set the level of service for any, any public road, and the level of service can be changed.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Third.
And you wanted us to add, Cindy, that this is under the 2021?
It's in the RDA.
It's in the RDA, okay. Never mind, scratch that. We got a motion, second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Now, do we need Tackinon up too?
Now, we'll go to Tackinon.
Doug, can you, do you have a notary so that we get this signed? And while they're here, they can go down and get it recorded.
Do you want to wait till this is signed before we can move on?
Well, we can move on with the next one, but we have it in place when we're done here.
And Jen, are you with Tackinon too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So Cindy, I'll let you kind of lay this one out for us as well.
This one is up Withers Lane, and it's a split, two lots. And what we did was we took the credit for River Bottom subdivision and put it into this RDA.
Where is?
Up Withers Lane. About like 70 feet of frontage. Go to the east. Here?
Up one, to the right.
Okay.
Keep going one to the right. That one.
Okay.
Is Withers Lane, is that a private road?
Public.
That's a public road as well.
It's public to where they enter right under the Withers word.
Okay. That's the end of the public road right there.
Yes, that's where the turnaround is. So this is a two-lot, same deal with the road development agreement, except after applying the credit from the other subdivision, they will actually owe us $316.
Which parcel is it?
One with that flagpole that goes up to the right, right up.
That one here.
That one there, okay.
So they own along Withers here. So where's your access road?
There's a, the Withers.
It will be right under the W-I-T-H.
Okay, so here's the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
And then Elds own this.
So go back to the west. There's a little bit of frontage there. Right there.
That piece there that goes.
So this abuts the cul-de-sac, but there is no, where's their access easement here? Is there an easement onto their property?
No, it's because they front on the Withers Lane right-of-way. The, the purple lines aren't in the exact location.
Okay, so they actually front on this road, and Elds don't own between there?
Go to the west, go to the left, right there. Right above that is a frontage.
Right here?
Do you want me to point to it?
Yes, please.
Oh, there it is, yeah, right there.
Right here?
That's actually not it. That's the Griffiths property.
And I'm sure it's tall enough, right here, right here. That's their frontage.
And so Withers is right there? Where is, why is Withers down here?
Because they just kind of draw over it. And then we have 25 feet already from center with a prescriptive easement, and they access right through here.
So that's the easement all through there?
Yes.
Okay.
And you have a writney easement through the lanes?
No, it's a county roadway easement. The size of the cul-de-sac is more.
It must be in the wrong locations.
Everything should drop.
Yeah, okay.
But my question, Cindy, is on Withers, that's a county road. Is that a 70-foot right-of-way through there?
No, it's, right now, a prescriptive road right-of-way, which is the 25 feet from center.
Well, it's a 50-foot.
If, with, if, Layton, who owns that piece right there?
Layton.
If they ever plat, then we, they will have to give us the right-of-way.
Okay, that was my question.
Right now, we, we have the right-of-way, it's just in a different format.
So Jen, are you good with the remaining 300 and whatever you said dollars for the road development? Any more questions on this one? I would entertain a motion to approve this one. Did you send us a motion for this one?
Yes.
I don't see it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Tackinon Estates final plat for $316.
There's a, there's an actual motion to approve somewhere. We've got to also approve the chairman to sign it.
Can I find it?
All I found is this piece.
Let me get there.
Another piece. Oh, there it is.
In the BLCC packet.
There it is. Okay, a move to approve the final plat for Tackinon Estates, accept the wildfire mitigation plan, acknowledge the shared driveway agreement, approve the road development agreement as presented with contribution in the amount of $316. Authorize the chairman to sign the road development agreement, and authorize the chairman to sign the plat.
I'll second.
Just second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
You're not stamping that one. You're doing great. In general, have to sign on so.
You're signing on those, can we take a five-minute break?
Yep.
Bad idea.
I'll do, right?
Jenna, do you want to go ahead and do your, do Jenna's notary also?
Mr. Chairman, we're unmuted.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're at 10 o'clock, we're running a little bit late, but that's all right. This is a discussion decision on Fish and Game Solutions for Providing Parking and Ice Anglers at the 90-degree turn in West Mountain, requesting the Valley County Road Department to donate materials for completion. So I'll turn it over to you, go ahead.
Hey, my name's Jordan Messner. I'm representing Fish and Game in McCall. So as, as the commission knows, we, you all signed a letter with Fish and Game and State Parks requesting BOR to work with us on finding some solutions at the 90-degree turn for Ice Anglers to park in the winter. Fish and Game, State Parks, Bureau of Rec, and Valley County staff got together to discuss what solutions we might pursue, and it was determined that the most appropriate solution was to utilize the county's existing road easement along West Mountain to widen the shoulder and then allow for some parallel parking along the roadway. So the current easement's 66-foot wide, and the current roadway is about 33-foot wide. So there is opportunity there for us to stay within the county's current road easement, widen the shoulder about 10, 10 to 15 feet or so, and be able to have some, like, winter parking on the shoulder of the road there at the 90. So the proposals to widen the shoulder approximately for approximately 200 feet on the south side and 200 feet on the east side from the corner there. So basically, on the outside of the corner for 400 feet total. That'll provide parking for approximately eight vehicles with trailers. We could use more long-term, but this is a, a solution that'll, you know, hopefully show some progress and, and start getting us to where we need to be. So I met with the County Road Department, Jeff McFadden, to discuss logistics for execution of this for this month. We talked about what the project should look like. I've contact, contacted the Southern Idaho Timber Protection Association, and they have agreed to do the earthwork for us, and we will contract that with them. We'll pay for it. Should, it'll probably be around 10 grand or so. Southern Idaho Timber Protection Agency is working with the road department on the permitting side of things. I've got a line located out there this week, as well as a surveyor that's going to stake the current easement out there this week, just so we're all ready to go. And then the earthwork is set to take place in late October. And then IDFG is going to seed the area after earthwork is done. So the, the goal of this is to, you know, grade, level, and widen the shoulder, but not have it look like roadway. So we're going to do all that and then reseed it so that during the summertime, you know, we're not going to have people driving on that portion of the shoulder or anything. But during the wintertime, it's in a place that when the ground is frozen, covered in snow, we can widen the shoulder there, the county can, and, and provide some park, some safe parking off of the roadway there. So I don't believe there's going to be a lot of materials needed for this since we're, you know, not planning on actually building roadway. But I wanted to request that if we did need a couple loads of gravel or something like that, that the county would be willing to donate that material.
Jordan, I appreciate all the work on this. I think this is going to help us a lot. I talked to the regional Bureau of Rec person, and their concern is winter camping on this piece of property. So we may have to put up no camping signs, no overnight parking, or something like that. But I said, well, let's just wait and see if that problem happens before we go to all that. Jeff, are you good with all this? You've got, come on up to Mike.
That fence that was put up?
I've got a line located out there this week as well as a surveyor that's going to stake the current easement out there this week. Just so we're all ready to go. And then the earthwork is set to take place in late October. And then IDFG is going to seed the area after earthwork is done. So the, the goal of this is to, you know, grade level and widen the shoulder, but not have it look like roadway. So we're going to do all that and then reseed it so that during the summertime, you know, we're not going to have people driving on that portion of the shoulder or anything. But during the wintertime, it's in a place that when the ground is frozen, covered in snow, we can widen the shoulder there, the county can. And, and provide some parks, some safe parking off of the roadway there. So I don't believe there's going to be a lot of materials needed for this since we're, you know, not planning on actually building roadway. But I wanted to request that if we did need a couple loads of gravel or something like that, that the county would be willing to donate that material.
Jordan, I appreciate all the work on this. I think this is going to help us a lot. I talked to the Regional Bureau Rec person. And their concern is winter camping on this piece of property. So we may have to put up no camping signs, no overnight parking or something like that. But I said, let's just wait and see if that problem happens before we go to all that. Jeff, are you good with all this? Come on up to the mic.
That fence that was put up, that, that's still within, we won't be touching that fence or bothering that fence.
So when I met with Jordan out there. Two hundred feet on the south side of West Mountain Road on the west side of the ninety. There's a high spot out there. We're, we're going to work with Southern Idaho Timber and they're going to take, bring that high spot down and around the corner. Like Jordan said. We shouldn't need. Anything from what I can tell by looking at it, but we might need a little bit. They might need a little bit. And we can use Lakeport Pit Run for that material which packs in there.
Good, good.
Good. And it's. Doesn't cost a whole lot of money. What's that?
So you won't have a mud hole.
Right, right. But it's, it's winter only, but there will be people swinging wide there to whatever they might park there and take a picture or something so they're not on the road. But this will still allow two lanes of traffic. Plus the parking. And we've done this at no business. We did it over here. At Anderson Creek.
Anderson Creek, yeah.
Yep. That was all kind of grant work stuff. And this here, I don't think it's going to take a grant because I mean, they got their excess yes money and they're willing to help. So I figure we better do what we can do to get people off the road. And that's pretty popular. We used to keep the W M A area open with the road grader, which kind of turned into a big no finally. So we're trying to figure out something else. We're there trying to figure out something else.
Good, good. And the action that we would do would just give you permission to donate any material that they would need.
Yeah, that's pretty much what he's here for. And I told him it's just like we did at Stonebreaker. They got to ask you guys for permission.
Sure, sure. So I'll make the motion. We authorize the Road Department to supply materials for the West Mountain Road. Ninety-degree turn improvements. Would you say it all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Good job, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to recess as Valley County Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Valley County EMS District Board. One, come on up. We're in the process of action today is to appoint a new EMS captain. Give us a little history on that one, will you?
So the current administrative council that you have for the EMS district has representation of each of the districts. Every time we change who each district is going to be represented by, we have to get it approved as an appointed position from the governing board. So that's what we're doing today. So Jackie has been the EMS captain for a while. But because of all the things that are happening, changes in votings and stuff that need to happen, specific to ambulance and then transition, hopefully. The new district and stuff. We should probably have, I wanted to make sure she was appointed so no one would say that we didn't follow the steps of the current operations and bylaws. We're asking, we already talked to the commissioners. I'm, they're doing their vote on their board meeting in the next week. Um, to make sure that's solidified as well as of that position. But they've already given me a nod that each of them had given me individual nods that they agree with that because that's how we've always done it. But it's just more of a technicality to.
So this is Jackie Wood.
Jackie Hersler.
Gersler?
Hersler.
Hersler. Because I thought you were talking about Jackie Wannenberg and I don't remember any of this. Hersler, okay.
And Jackie is with the, you with Donley or?
Yeah.
Donley, yeah.
Sorry.
Is it H U R S L E R?
Sorry.
How do you spell your last name? Want to make sure we get it right for the record.
H U R Z E L E R.
H U R Z.
Hersler, okay. H U R Z L E R.
You sneak my husband for that name.
We will. Next time we see him, we'll thank him.
We're just looking for an appointment onto the administrative council as its Donley representative.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Jackie Hersler as the Donley representative on the EMS board.
Second. Who did second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep.
Here, Juan.
Morning, Kevin. Just letting you know I'm leaving my car here for a week. Make sure that nobody gets in it, okay?
Make sure it's here when you get back.
Make sure it's here when I get back, can you please?
Okay, at this time, we're going to go out of the EMS and reconvene as the Valley County Board of Commissioners. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is accepting of donation for optional uniforms for Valley County Patrol deputies. Cowboy hats, Sheriff, come on up.
I want a model. Where's your hat?
These Stetsons or what are they?
Morning.
Good morning.
So I was approached by some of our deputies about wearing cowboy hats on duty. They brought up the sun, the skin cancer, all the good stuff that goes along with it. Keep the sun off their necks and everything. And we even brought it up with the community and got an overwhelming response from them. I didn't want to burden the taxpayers with any additional uniform costs though. So I did say it's all right with the guys if they, if they bought it themselves. Harry Bettis found out about it and he wanted to put five thousand dollars down at the Silver Tip Hat Company in Donley. So I, I was concerned with Harry offering that. So I did reach out to his daughter Laura and she agreed with it. And she said, absolutely, we, we want to do that for the sheriff's office. So I'm here asking you guys if that's acceptable to, to let Harry do that. And then deputies who do want the hats, basically what it's going to be is silver tip felt in the winter and a white straw in the summer. So that way it goes as a uniform across the board. Everybody has the same that wants it. It's obviously not mandatory, but about eight or ten deputies do want to wear the cowboy hats.
Can you get these hats from like the new hat shop in Donley?
Yes, Silver Tip in Donley.
I was just watching one last night, believe it or not, on how they make Stetson hats. And the cheapest Stetson hat now is like twenty-three hundred dollars. They have hats up to fifty thousand dollars. So it depends on what kind of fur they use making these hats.
I don't need a lid that expensive.
They won't be able to wear them inside the vehicle. Does it slow down response time or anything? I mean, I'm just thinking about grabbing my hat every time I get out of a vehicle.
Right. Some, some guys just want to wear them, especially when they're out on the side of the road, stuff like that, on crash scenes and stuff like that.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I think we should think about buying the plastic covers over them for winter use because they don't like to get wet.
No, no.
I think that would should be.
Like I said, this is something that as the sheriff's office tax money, we're not going to be paying for. That's going to be the deputies are taking care of everything hat on their own, other than this generous gift that Bettis Ranch wants to supply.
Will it go into a like a line item for you guys or?
It's all volunteer or all donated money.
If they want to wear it, they're going to have to buy it. Like I said, this is just something that Harry Bettis found out about and he wants to help get it going.
He'll reimburse.
Okay. Our action today is just basically to accept the donation.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept, we allow, that we allow the sheriff's office to accept the donation. For our patrol deputies to wear cowboy hats if they so choose.
Second. Who did second? In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
What about the commissioners?
You guys look good.
Actually, I'll tell you what, they look sharp.
Yeah.
They look sharp.
Well, I got my old Stetson out last night and I'm going, you know, this is still in good shape. I think I better brush this back up and even start wearing it again.
Yeah, she had me try them with the silver belly just to look at it. It looks pretty sharp.
What are they, what are they running?
She's given them to us a cost at about two fifty for the.
The felt. That's a good deal. She, she really wants to see the deputies in them too, so.
Well, and if you ever get a chance, get on YouTube and search in Stetson Hat Company. And it's amazing. They have beaver hair that comes from Alaska and mink hair that comes from France. And it's like, no wonder it costs so much for one of these things.
Oh my goodness.
They mix all this fur together and make a felt out of it and then start building a hat. And it's just phenomenal.
Yeah, that how it's made stuff is kind of interesting on the, what goes into it.
Yeah.
There's a lot that goes into those hats. You, you definitely know when you put on a quality hat versus a Walmart hat. You don't get a headache after ten minutes.
What you find out about a cowboy hat is after it gets really wet.
Yes.
A lot of them will just fall apart immediately, so.
Yeah. Yeah. I had a Stetson for elk hunting and you, you knew when they were good and when they weren't.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Sheriff. So we got about seventeen minutes before our next agenda. Oh, no, 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 wait. Oh, yeah, that's right. You guys aren't on until eleven. Is there anybody else coming? Just you two? Was there anybody else? Is Ken showing up or anybody else? Just you two? Yeah, is he coming back?
I'm sure he's probably around the courthouse somewhere.
Let me see if I can get him. If he can come in, then we can start earlier. We got, let's get him here first and then we'll, we'll. Hurt when he gets here.
How many, how many of your officers think will actually wear those? Really?
Get, find him.
Here in a minute.
You're on your way. Good, thanks. Bye. Oh, is it sitting? You've probably listened to the median with an earbud or something. Our next agenda item is an action item. Yeah, you can sit at the table. Try and put those mics in front of you. You get a chance. This is an upper pad basin water request.
I think that one's on, but that, just hit the button on the side of it and it'll go green.
These are new today. You guys are breaking them in.
Really?
Yeah. We put this thing in the ceiling that was supposed to do it, but it's not doing it.
May not have done.
You gotta be smarter than Mike.
Hawk, you want to come on up?
You want to be up there?
Yeah. Hey, this is a upper pad basin water request for contribution for legal costs. So I'll turn it over to whoever's going to run the show.
Norm has put together organizational papers. If you'd like to take a look at them.
Cool.
We are about to file them with Secretary of State if you agree with them.
Yeah, come on up. Bring them up. Let's take a look.
That's an LLC.
We're having a meeting Thursday for the Alpha Discs to decide whether or not to join.
Is that an LLC corporation? What is it?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a private corporation, nonprofit. Called the Water Users Association and it'll be filed under a five oh one C three.
C three? I heard one the other day. What's a C four? I don't know. R R.
All kinds, C six.
Five oh one C is IRS designation for tax exempt. Then there's. C, C one through C seven or eight.
Yeah.
There's different, there, there's different categories. And I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what qualifies and what doesn't. For the majority of what you see is five oh one C three. Most everybody.
Yep.
Recognizes and remembers that, but.
I think, I'm not sure, but I think it's C four, they have to collect sales tax.
Potentially, yeah.
Or C three doesn't. Anyway, Ron, how many people have you got in this association? Have you got a list?
There was a minimum of three and that's what we put together so that we can file. You know, our Payette River Water Users Association has twenty-two members, I believe. I expect that, you know, as far as the corporation, that would suffice for them. But they will determine how many directors they want on their board. And if they then want to file them, they can amend that filing and include everyone.
Well, then you'll have to figure out who's president, secretary, all that stuff too. Now, is it too late for like Alpha Discs to join if we agree? Okay.
In fact, I am very hopeful that we, if we are successful in getting this water. The storage space. To include the city of McCall.
Oh, good.
And possibly Horseshoe Bend. Those two municipalities both use river water and they are junior water rights. So they depend upon renting water every year. And I think it would be a much more secure position for them to join this association. Where they would actually be owners of storage space. Of course, the reason that we're doing this through the association was because the Bureau has turned down individual requests. They don't like to have those real small contracts. And so we're doing our best to convince these folks that this is a good way to go. We are probably bracing ourselves for about a ten thousand dollar maybe financial request. Due to the fact that we're going to hire an attorney. Norm Sumanko has agreed to work with us. And he has indicated that. If we have to get into a, an expert witness of some kind. Our, our charge is going to be that we're going to have to deal with, I think it's a two thousand four biological opinion. Which means that the Bureau of Reclamation, anytime they make any change in their operations, they have to consult with National Marine Fisheries. And convince them that it's not going to upset the, the biological opinion. And the, the most important thing will be to them that it doesn't do anything to diminish the flow augmentation program. And we think we have a pretty good argument because. This, the demand on the river has already been there. So we're not going to change any stream flows by doing this. It actually turns out to be nothing more than paper transactions. And when they get this space in the reservoir, absolutely nothing will change except for the fact that they will gain ownership. Instead of using out of someone else's account, they'll have their own account. So we think we have a pretty good case, but we feel like we need the professional help. And that of an attorney and one of the attorneys that has a lot of knowledge, not only with the biological opinion, but his first agreement. So we've gone to a height.
Yeah, Norm's a great guy, really smart guy. I don't know if you guys have noticed in the Star News the last couple of weeks, the Bureau of Water Rights. I don't know if you've been reading that, but it was huge in the Star News last week. Bureau's filing for everything corrupt, I think, to box the lake.
Actually, that, I'm deeply involved in that. Yeah, and that is a reservoir refill issue. And that is open to comment now. It's such a complicated issue. I don't think it's something you want to hear about today.
Well, my thought of that is they're trying to get that stories before you guys get it.
But there's, I, I don't agree with, there's two different water rights that they're filing on, on each of the reservoirs. I'll, I'll give you a little bit of a scenario. After flood control release, they have, they basically refilled the reservoirs, but their water right has already been satisfied. So they were, every time we fill after flood control releases, reservoirs are actually filled outside of a water right. And so the, what the state decided to do is issue another water right or have them file for another water right. And they called that a refill water right and they gave it a designation as one and it's completely subordinated. They can fill up to the day of allocation and then they have to stop. But some of the people thought that they needed more security of spilling the reservoir. And so they, they came up with another idea and they. They, they filed for another water right called a refill two type water right, which does have a priority date. It will be, I believe, two thousand, two thousand one, I believe. I think that was the date that they're filing. So it might have been two thousand. Which will step in front of any new water right.
Yeah.
And I have adamantly opposed that water right. Based on the fact of my, my job as water master, that, that changed the game completely. And so I have been. On both sides of the fence. We had to file with the Lake Reservoir Company in order to protect ourselves. Bureau was probably those water rights on cascading deadwood and we didn't want to put them. Our, our field priority is ahead of theirs and we didn't want to get ourselves behind it. So I'm, I'm actually opposed to some of the water rights that I filed.
Well, would it help if we had a letter from this commission that we also opposed?
Yeah, I'd, I'd want to talk to the director today if I can. I tried to talk to him Thursday. They just opened it up. Comment and it goes, I think, until October tenth, which is bad timing for me to go to the Bureau and ask a favor of them of. Putting out contracts and then, and before I finish my sentence, tell you, by the way, I'm being opposed for your water right filing. So that, the timing couldn't be worse as far as I am concerned. And yet, it may be one of those things that happens no matter what. All the kicking and screaming. I do feel like the refill two type water right is unfair to any, any future water right. The biggest problem with it is that. The biggest problem with it is that up until now, every water right is determined whether it's in priority or not by stream flow. And that refill two water right basically makes water rights that are determined whether they are in priority by a human decision. In my mind, it's, uh, it's not acceptable.
So a refill, is that a beneficial use?
Yes, that's, yeah, everybody wants flood control and everybody wants a full reservoir. So that's.
That's a beneficial use?
Well, and I'm sitting here thinking this year, we haven't had the cyanobacteria in Cascade because they left it fuller for longer. And is that part of that, you know, the refill water right to leave it in the reservoir longer? So.
It actually doesn't affect anything as far as the fill. It still comes down to the fact it takes a lot of attention and finesse to fill the reservoir correctly. And if you make a mistake, the water's downstream. If you add out more water than usual, it's like, well, it's, it's gonna be gone. The sad thing is that there isn't any water rights that are big enough to affect the refill of a reservoir if they did curtail those to fill them. Right now, it's not gonna do anything because there isn't any water right that would be junior to them. But in the future, it will get in the way of those water rights. But I think it might be a problem is if somebody has a, an idea maybe for a private reservoir or even a state reservoir. They were gonna be dealing with the federal government rather than.
Are you, are you actively working on getting more people up to speed on what you guys are doing? And getting them signed up to go along with you? Other, what is it, water right holders here in the valley?
Well, uh, like I say, I'm not certain whether all the kicking and screaming would make any difference. I, I wanna jump to the director to see because in my mind, yeah, I don't know how we got on this subject either.
My fault, probably.
I'm, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about your five oh one C three. Are you guys working on getting other people involved?
Okay, that's good to know, yes.
The reason we only have three on there right now is because it required three to form the association and record it with the Secretary of State.
Right.
And so we got three that we knew we could get their addresses and contact and so we only used three. As far as getting all the people on the board or involved in the association, um, just 'cause the room's empty doesn't mean there's not a lot of interest in this. It's just that we didn't feel we needed everybody to come to town today. Um, I'd like to give you a little history if I could as to how we kinda decided between Ron and myself to hire Norm. And the reason is, I think I've mentioned here before, Cliff Benz, who was our attorney in Ontario, who's now congressman from Eastern Oregon, is also the chairman of the Water Committee in Congress. And so I called him a month or so ago and asked him, being as he is in that position, he deals with Bureau of Reclamation on a pertinently daily basis, would he help us to acquire this story? And he said, I'll be happy to help you, but before I will go to the Bureau, I need a legal opinion so they have the facts in front of me so I know exactly what I'm talking about. And my conversation with Ron, the best way we could think of to get this legal opinion that would make Mr. Benz comfortable to go to the Bureau is to get a legal opinion that has the facts and Norm Simanco, in our opinion, was the guy that probably could give us that and has been willing to work with us on it. Ron's been talking to Norm. He actually watched the meeting we had here with the Bureau.
Oh, yeah? Oh, good.
You could talk about that.
Yeah, he seemed to know quite a bit about what we were, what we were up to, which surprised me. I didn't realize he, he could go in and, and later watch those. So I, and he has not seen this as too big a hurdle, I think. He's been quite encouraging. So I'm hoping that it's just a matter of maybe handling this administratively to where we don't have to go very far. Our big challenge is to convince everyone that we're not gonna upset anything on that biological opinion. And I think Norm Simanco is the one to do that because he's worked very diligently on getting the biological opinion approved. And then he also worked with the Nespers agreement. And of course, that, that set the rates and the volumes that mandated by us to try to send down every.
That was more of a federal deal with the Nespers tribe, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. That kinda set the base.
That was to settle their eighteen fifty-five claims on all the water in the river. And so it, it turned out that during those negotiations, the Bureau, because the Payette does have a lot of water that's not contracted at this point, there, that was a, that was a point that was maybe something that they could settle with the Nespers on by giving them a base in the reservoir. That's why I think that there should be a base for us to get. Because of the authorization of Cascade reservoir being a, or irrigation reservoir, I believe it's just logical that the locals here should have that base contracted.
Yeah, it makes sense.
So if, if this all works, we get this legal opinion from Norm, um, I think our goal is to get Congressman Benz and Congressman Fulcher together to go to the Bureau with water request and likely the land request that we visited about earlier and go there. And I think in both cases, I think both congressmen feel that play nice and go with an administrative option is gonna be much easier than going with a legislative option. And with the relationship Mr. Benz has and, and Mr. Fulcher, they, they, they have a good relationship together. And I think they both probably have a good relationship with the Bureau. I think hopefully cooler heads prevail on this. I think the main thing, and, and how long do you think it might? Did Norm think how, how long it might take to put together his opinion?
You know, I, I don't think it would take very long for him to, to do that. The fact is though, he's a very busy person and so it's a matter of when he can fit it in his work schedule. What we like to do and what Phil and I've talked about is coming up with that proposal right away ahead of the Bureau coming back to us if we can. In other words, try to know the answer to all the questions before we ask him.
Absolutely. So you guys are here today to ask for, you said ten thousand. What does that cost? Are you, is there other skin in the game besides the county? Are some of the local guys putting in money or what's the plan?
We, well, that's the problem is we don't, still don't have an association put together, although we will shortly, but we don't know how to assess until we know if we're gonna get the water, we know who is gonna be members of it. We haven't got it put together yet as far as the entire organization of it. So who do we assess? That's the question.
Well, and I'm kind of in a predicament because being a member of the Alpha Ditch and probably will be a part of this, I'm gonna have to accuse myself for any kind of funding towards this because I'm biased. So I gotta be real careful here as far as where I'm coming from personally.
Would you personally benefit? You wouldn't personally benefit, so.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yes.
That'd be a question for your legal counsel, but I don't see how.
If our water costs more, it would affect me big time.
It's a close enough connection. I'd recommend that you, that you declare conflict and.
And I think that.
But you still have, you still have a forum and you can still vote.
So my question is gonna be legal counsel. As you know, you know, using public funds to a private entity is an issue. And so I need some, I need some counsel on, does this meet the threshold of being a public cause, a public, you know, um, concern enough that we could use public funds for this going to a private entity? That's, we're restricted in that.
You, you'll probably get Brian's opinion on this, but it's still my opinion. I know there's been a question all along, is this just a fileable responsibility for Valley County? You've all sworn to uphold the Constitution of the State of Idaho and the, and the United States and both say your job is to protect life and property for the people in Valley County. Water rights are a property. That, to me, is an ultimate rule of county commissioners. And I may, I may not be correct on that, but I believe if we lose our water rights or if we can't, that is a property right that we have today that is absolutely amongst your authority to defend.
Yeah, but the issue that I have, Phil, is you're not losing your water right, but you may have to buy stories to continue pumping later on in the summer, especially in a low water year, but you still have the water right.
And I would agree with you, except for the fact and you and Brian were in the room when Brian looked it up and said Valley County had to okay the formation of the Water District. Which tells me that Valley County has had a role in this all along in protecting our water. And when Valley County agreed to the formation of a Water District, I think that gave the Valley County Commissioners a role to make sure it was done appropriately. And in my case, this is a, what's going on with the Water District right now to administer us at this point is putting everybody's water right at risk because if it costs too much, we're gonna not irrigate. You agree with that?
Yeah, the, the, uh, the water right's going to exist, but the, the water may not be there.
The water's not there, yeah.
Uh, no. And that's, that's the case, you know, the, the water right is not in priority and that's what we're going after is stored water to mitigate the fact that we want to water it out of priority. That's exactly what reservoirs are for. They're built so we can over appropriate the river and take advantage of that spring runoff and catch.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, uh, yeah, it's, uh, we, you know, you, you folks will have to decide on whether or not you think if you could, yeah, work this out.
So these are our four tests for public purpose funding. Serves the benefit of a community as a whole. I would agree with you. I think it does serve the benefit of a whole. Directly related, related to the function of government. That's, you know, that may be a little bit of a gray area. Private organization exists for the benefit of, of the government entity making the donation and the activities being funded is legislatively authorized. The government could independently conduct the activities it is funding. So could we do this work within the government? Um, we'd have to figure out how to do that. Some level of control over the activities, contract or an MOU to ensure that the activities will continually meet the public purpose requirement. So that's what I'm wondering is how do we hire, do something on an MOU agreement with this new group? So that you could act on behalf of the county to create this opportunity for water rights? Water rights are a huge issue. We just spent three days at a county commissioner meeting of which water white, water rights are going to continue to evolve, not just irrigation water rights, but even domestic and public wells. So this is gonna be an ongoing issue. And whether that is addressed or not, that most certainly is a health and safety issue for Valley County residents. So instead of just donating funds, how can we come up with an MOU stating, this is the things you're gonna do on behalf of the government to receive these funds? That would be my way of going about it. I don't know what your legal.
My conversation with Brian was exactly down this road and that's why we chose to go ahead and get this thing formed because the, go ahead, please.
Well, the, the, the use of, the, the use of public funds that you're responsible for, you have to, you have to make your decision through the lens of the public purpose doctrine. Sherry, you just kind of outlined what those elements are for the public purpose doctrine. So if you can, if you can meet those, if you can meet those elements, and, and it doesn't mean that you, if you can't meet one of them, that you can't still approve it because you made the other three. So, so that's what I would, that, that's what I would advise you to do is as you think about your, you've got an action item in front of you, think about what, whether you're going to meet the public purpose test or the contribution of dollars. Because what's in, the question that's in front of you is, and you take public funds and contribute those towards a nonprofit, private corporation. We've, we've done that in the past because it meets the elements of public purpose doctrine. And some do, some don't. Uh, and that's, that's what I think you need to, you need to think through and, and make your decision about uh, whether you feel comfortable pending that decision uh, under that umbrella of, you, you know, is there, is there an overall benefit to the public?
Well, you know, in my mindset of what we've done recently, you know, we start off with the land trust and we put my, public money into the pickleball court, you know, for recreation.
That's a recent example, yep.
Yep, and, um, and this is something that's taken care of the ranchers in our whole community, which is Valley County. I don't see an issue, when you look at those realms, that we would be out of bounds.
Make a difference if it's taxable, local taxable funds versus ARPA?
Brian, do you know, can, I'm just throwing this out here. Can we loan this group ten thousand dollars and then after they form their corporation and get their membership and get their officers, they could pay us back? As an assessment, they assist their membership and pay us back? Would that keep us out of hot water?
No, I don't.
It's the same as giving it to them, isn't it?
No, I think, no, it's, no, it's actually different.
A lot more restrictive.
The Idaho Constitution prevents any government entity from pledging its credit or
Okay.
or giving loans. So that's, that's probably off of the table. Yeah, I'd, I'd feel, I'd feel nervous about that. This, this really, like I said, you're gonna have to view this through the lens of, of that public purpose doctrine. If we were, if your, if your vote is affirmative to approve this, I would, I, I would draft some sort of an agreement similar to what we did with the Pickleball Association where we would be transferring a portion of, transferring a portion of the money and pulling out what public purpose is for, uh, for the contribution of those dollars to a private, private organization.
Well, and like right now, who would we write the check out to? That's really the issue. I mean, once you get, once you get, and you haven't formed yet, correct? You're still.
Haven't filed yet, no. I, I've gone through the Secretary of State basically to find out whether we have a unique name, which seems to pass that. So it's, it would take probably another week.
And then you'd have to open a bank account, I'm assuming, and then that'd be the only way we could ever get those funds to you. My issue that I'm having honestly is, as far as my personal is, the Alpha Ditch company, we've been, already been administered. He's been on, up there three or four times and so far, we're not in violation. And so how do I tell everybody we need to join this group if our water right is old enough that we don't have an issue? They may come back and say, we don't wanna put any money into this. I don't know, but that meeting's not till Thursday.
I think the county as a whole supporting each other is, you know, I mean, that's a large conversation. Um, I don't have a problem doing this. I think it requires an MOU. What are you gonna do on behalf, you know, of the county in order to accomplish these tasks? And I don't have a problem with it, you know, from there.
Just in case there was a question, that's why I handed you this. This tells you exactly how important agriculture is in the state of Idaho and your responsibilities to help protect it. To me, this is, this even gives you the ability to levy taxes if you need to, to help protect agriculture. This is statute. I, I've used it before. Um, this is why you pay to help protect sheep guys with coyotes. Or.
Wolves.
Well, well, no, that's the problem. And this is a reminder, seems that there was a resolution in IAC Association Counties this week to put wolves on this list because unfortunately they're enumerated and wolves are not on it. And Open Valley County supported that to put wolves on this list to that resolution, which I helped Gordon write.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That it was successful so that we can include wolves in this because they were not before. Ironically, if you read down here far enough, it says even endangered species are to be included.
Well, and that, and that part there says right at the top, full power and authority to declare any predatory animal.
Yes, it does. So, uh, in that resolution that, that, uh.
So that did not move forward. However, we are in support of what Gordon's trying to do, so we will write a letter of support. Judy Boyle's still gonna take it forward. It's just not one of IAC's, uh, top priorities for the year.
But in my mind, it should be one of IAC's top priorities because that would, that would empower the ADC districts as well, which are not, which got shoved down my throat because they're not in, wolves are not enumerated on that. So I only bring this up because this is important. Agriculture is important in the state of Idaho. The legislators historically recognize the importance that even, I always found that odd that they give you the ability to levy particular taxes for pests or anything that threatens agriculture. So I just bring this as, to help ease your mind that you may be criticized because it's basically in statute that this is what you're, you're supposed to do, so.
That's the Animal Damage Control Board statute you're referring to.
Which I think is a little different than water issue, but I don't know. I, my thing is, you know, I think before we throw any money at it, we need to make sure that we believe we can do this.
Sure. I think the point, if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, I think the point is that the county, and not just Valley County, all counties are making financial contributions to the support of agriculture through the Animal Damage Control Board, uh, process that basically directs and authorizes each individual county to, to make a financial contribution for the, for the control of, of predatory animals within the county. So that it's a similar analogy, I think, to what you have in front of you. Whether it's pests that's threatening agriculture or water or lack thereof, you can, you, you can, if you choose to, uh, identify that as a, as a benefit to the community as a, as a whole and that meets the public purpose.
So we have a budget line item for the pest control, of which we fund every year.
Yeah, cause you're pulling, you're pulling that out, uh, from, I don't know, it's general fund or if it's a specific, uh, general fund?
It's budgeted in the general fund, yeah.
You know, levy for it though.
Our first day of a new budget hearing, or budget year, there is nothing budgeted for this this year. It would have to come from either PILT or ARPA funds for this donation.
Or general fund reserve.
General fund reserve.
We used to have a big one of those. I don't know if you still do.
I think my request would be for you...
No, we're fiscally responsible, Phil.
I hope you have a baby there.
We're gonna have to get us by in case we need it.
I think my request would, would be for you guys to make sure that you were comfortable and, and if you could do this, then we would greatly appreciate it. But during this discussion, I, I thought of something that I might investigate. Idaho Water Resource Board has a revolving fund. And I do believe that they have some grants. They're mostly for engineering grants. But I might talk to them and see if they would be able to maybe help us out or at least get us something.
Well, and I, I really wanna support this because I think like Phil said, this is huge. This is gonna affect a lot of big chunks of ground up here if they don't have water. But I wanna make sure that none of us are gonna go to jail a year or two from now on, right?
I wouldn't wanna do that.
That would be nice.
Well, more importantly, I think that this is the start of a larger conversation when it comes to water rights, you know? Let's get something in place. If this is a water, it's all gonna be dependent on water rights? I think it's a, I think it's a start of a large conversation on water rights in Idaho.
Well, historically, every time the, the state gets pinched for water, you know, when urban and municipality use takes, gets short, it always comes from agriculture. And that's, that's historically where it comes from. They're usually expected to operate more efficiently so that they can be some leftover for, for the, for the cities. And quite frankly, there's enough technology now that we've been able to do that. My whole enthusiasm towards trying to get this is that I think it's the fairest way to handle it. I think as far as when you're talking about equity, this is, this is where these storage spaces need to be occupied, you know, by these landowners up here. And I'm very hopeful that other people see it our way. Because, uh, I think forty, forty-nine percent, I believe, of Cascade Reservoir is uncontracted.
Well...
And I think it's even higher than that when you take, when you include Edward in there. At least, I think it might be forty-one percent of Cascade is still uncontracted.
So with this, I, again, I immediately go to the environmental issues that Cascade has. If it's forty-one percent uncontracted, you know, how do we try and leave more in the reservoir so that we can offset some of the environmental issues?
Well, the, the reason we drain it down so far is our commitment to flow augmentation. A lot of users typically use in the neighborhood of a hundred and eighty thousand acre feet and it's not unusual to have flow augmentation equal that amount. And in my opinion, of course, it, it, it's a failed experiment. Flow augmentation, in my opinion, doesn't work. And I think that it's probably going to be, I, I doubt that it will last past two thousand thirty-four because that's the end of the Nez Perce Agreement. That is only my personal opinion. But I, I'm beginning to hear other people talk about it. The work that Mike Simpson is doing is, you know, he's talked about, uh, the solution of removing the four Lower Snake River dams. I don't expect that to happen. But I think the scrutiny that's gonna be put on the programs that are in place right now are gonna cause people to look at flow augmentation. All the money that's been spent on that and whether any good has it come from it? So I expect a change. I don't know whether it'll be better or whether it'll be worse. But I, I consider flow augmentation, in my own opinion, to be a failed experiment. And the reason I do that is because it's so, so minute, the effect is so minute compared to the Clonan River. What I've been told is that the total travel time from, from Cascade to the ocean is twenty-six days. And when we add augmentation water to it, it only changes that timing by two hours.
Oh, wow!
Oh, my goodness.
Well, I was thinking, Ron, maybe what we should do is, we're not saying yes or no, but if you go ahead and get your corporation part done, Brian can look into the fact that we can legally give you guys this money. And then let's get back together in a couple of weeks or whenever you, you guys are ready. And then we'll go from there and hopefully we'll have a little better information. Yep, that's all I can do.
We're meeting with Norm as soon as possible to get this started. So, um, I guess I was kinda hoping we'd have a commitment so that we could pay. But it's the reason for coming here today.
Well, I wish we'd had this a little sooner, Phil, so we could've looked into it a little harder.
He has. I've asked him to.
I'm not gonna make the decision.
No.
I know the legality of it. I asked.
The, well, like I said, the, the decision you have to make has to meet the, the elements of the public purpose doctrine. If you, if you find that this is a legitimate public purpose, then you have the authority to, to approve it.
And I would feel comfortable with that if we do it based upon completion of an MOU.
We'll work together to create the MOU. I think Brian suggested he had a boilerplate MOU that would probably work.
I, I'm plenty fine with that.
So...
And I have to recuse myself because I'm personally involved.
You should, you should recuse yourself.
Can I make a motion?
There's gonna be a vote today.
I can do it. So Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve a ten thousand dollar contribution to the new, what is the name of the district?
Upper Payette Storage Water Association.
Upper Payette Storage Water Association, pending an MOU to be created with our legal team that outlines the public benefit from the use of these funds.
That work? Second.
Then moved in second. All in favor, and please Doug, get in the record that I recused myself.
Mr. Chairman, it already is.
Thank you. All in favor of this? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Now the issue is who would we write the check out to?
This association.
Once it's filed.
Once it's filed.
I'll get an agreement, draft it up, and then, uh, bring that back for your, for your consideration and approval in a future, in a future meeting. And then all that will be laid out in, in that, uh, remember how we styled that, but in the agreement.
So can I ask you, Brian, in my case personally, if Alpha Ditch Company decides not to join this, then I won't have an, an issue. I can...
Correct. Yeah, that's...
I don't know that Thursday night.
I think that, yeah, I think the concern and maybe, maybe the overly conservative concern though is that you could potentially have, you could potentially future, in the future, benefit from, from this, from this vote personally, since you're a member of the Alpha District, uh, or the Alpha Ditch.
We'd have to have a really low water year before we'd have to buy stories.
Yep, so just in, in a sense of caution, I think for all of you as commissioners, whenever you have something that could potentially be a conflict, declare it. Uh, that way you don't, you don't run into...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And then, and then again, the lens that you judge action items like this is through that public purpose doctrine. Identify, and I think we've had a good discussion that I can capture in an, in an agreement going forward, what the, what the benefits to the public is for this, for this contribution.
Ron, I wanted to ask you...
This is one, one time.
Can the county apply for some of that story? We don't, we couldn't show beneficial use, so I don't know how that would...
Our beneficial use though is the health and of the...
The health of the reservoir, I guess.
I mean, and it's a recreation based, I think we should try that.
Maybe that's what we need to put in the MOU that we're gonna contract with you with this, the name of the, forgot of it, Valley County District for protection of the Cascade Reservoir.
One of the things that we've struggled with is we're not gonna know exactly how much we need right off the bat. But we'd like to, we'd like to contract as much as we can get. And maybe the, maybe the county could be the owner of the storage that's, that's not being used. In other words, the excess what's, what's held in reserve.
So then if people wanted to rent that money, the money would come to the county, correct?
The county could, and transfer ownership when we found out, when I spoke. It's gonna take probably more than one accounting year to find out exactly how this is gonna shape up. And I'm going to try to get that accomplished, uh, through the Water District. I have, we have two representatives on the canal that I serve on, the Upper Payette Ditch. And I'm gonna try to get one of our representatives to propose a, a motion that will run some scenarios to see exactly, you know, who is gonna need storage and who's gonna be okay. And so that's done, we'll know exactly how, how this is gonna be issued out in the correct hands.
And I think honestly, that actually broadens the, the benefit to Valley County is if we're working on the environmental issues, that concerns everybody, including recreationists throughout Valley County.
I think that's how we would tie us into that.
Yeah. Economic benefit, the, you know...
We, we can run that past Norm Zemanko and see whether that would pass the water code as well.
Perfect.
Cause recreation is a beneficial use now. Yeah? Okay, so I guess the last thing before we kick you guys out is how soon do you need this money?
Oh, we probably need it within a month.
Oh, okay. Well, Doug will get it on his claim probably next page.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing though is first we need the MOU, which, uh, Mr. Oki will be working on. We'll get that on the agenda. I don't know if next Tuesday is soon or be accomplished then. If not, it would be on October sixteenth. And then what we would need from the user group is just an invoice requesting the funding. It'll go through the claim process and be paid at that time.
Does that work?
I would assume that we'll get an invoice from Norm in some time. It'll be a while before we would request the fund.
Well, and I think, you know, is ten thousand gonna be enough? That's my first thought. Is up to ten thousand or is ten thousand gonna really cover it? Cause Norm's, Norm's a smart guy, but...
Norm thinks, Norm came to us with a little bit lower number than that, but we decided to ask for ten. Because I, every attorney I've worked with usually overthrew their estimate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What was his estimate, if you mind me asking?
We understand that. We understand that pain.
Ask him about promoting.
That happens to us all the time.
So we're not gonna request any money until we have a bill to pay. And, and I, I would guess that'd be over a month.
That'll work. That'll work.
Okay, thanks you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for setting us up.
You're welcome.
I think it's good elf.
He is a good elf.
Yeah, yeah.
He's our brain.
Don't tell him that, okay? I was gonna wanna raise.
He's no Lehigh rich, but... You had that coming.
Or Archie. No worries. Or Archie.
Thank you.
Yeah, see you guys. What you got, Jeremy?
Chairman, uh, Jeremy did not get his signature on one of the documents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That contract, that computer arts contract had...
Two signatures? Three, okay. Well, it's a good thing you caught it today, huh? Oh, all of us signed it, huh?
Yeah, it's gonna all be on all three things.
Seem to find this West, this bid opening thing.
She brings it all to us.
Thank you.
Well, it's not in our packet there.
We're gonna go eat lunch.
Have a good lunch. See you guys.
Robert Dugan. Four missing Valley County records. It's not in our packet either. Went by the computer arts booth down in IAC.
Next one down?
Those guys go, oh, Valley County, and it's like, you know, if you guys would've stepped up and done your job, we probably would've been moving. They didn't like that comment at all. Steph, how are ya? Yeah, cool. Oh, opening bids?
I'm scouting a couple more down there. I've got a couple of contracts for you to sign.
Thanks, Brian, for your help on that. I'll put the quarter in the box when I get to your office. What is this? Oh, the old ones we already approved?
He's paying you on the side? What?
That Doug's got of a test, though. And these guys are so jealous because I have this. It's like ten years and then you get one.
Is that what it takes?
I don't know.
Right. Few more as you...
And Doug, we got two that we did a couple of weeks ago. You got a test.
Brian, I'm forwarding you an email I want you to respond to before we respond, okay?
Take sure you're helping Brian too on that for me personally. Okay, our next agenda, are we on?
Yes, sir.
Is a bid opening for West Hazard Unit Number Three. And this is for twenty-seven point one acres. So I'm just gonna start at the top of the pile.
Oh, we have some new names on here. That's exciting.
Oh, yeah, no, there's five of them today.
Awesome.
Uh, well, those units large enough to draw in some north area contractors. And so I don't know what to expect.
Hey, the first one that opened up was Bear and Loper. And this is for two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars per acre. Steph, I'll let you figure it out.
Can I get that price more times?
Two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars per acre.
That was, uh, twenty-seven something acres?
Point one.
Point one.
Sixty-seven thousand two oh eight. Two of us do it, we can confirm each other.
Sixty-seven two oh eight.
Fifty-seven or sixty?
Sixty-seven two oh eight.
Sixty-seven.
I think it's imprudent for us two of us to do it all the time.
I do too.
Should've sharpened my knife. A little dull. Okay, the next one is from Eli Rad, Rad Mulching and Fire Reduction. Out of Cottonwood. And this one is for two thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Same acreage?
Same acreage.
Seventy-four thousand five twenty-five.
Always like envelopes that have the guy's grease and oil all over the back. Did this in the truck?
No, they're working.
He's working. Okay, this is from John Lydriksen. And this one is two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, which one is that?
Specialized Land Works.
Specialized Land Works.
Two thousand four hundred and fifty.
For sixty-six thousand three ninety-five.
Sixty-six, three ninety-five.
Okay, the fourth bid is from Jeffrey Miller Excavation, Miller Excavation, ooh, boy. And this is, is for one thousand five hundred dollars per acre.
Forty thousand six hundred and fifty.
And he's out of council.
God, yours is working, Commissioner.
Have you worked with any of these contractors?
Just finish this one and then I'll review them for you.
Okay, the last one is from D and D Tree and Land Management, Curtis Stillwell out of Cascade. This one is for two thousand three hundred and fifty.
For sixty-three thousand six eighty-five.
Okay, so Commissioner, I'll bring you up to speed on these five guys. We have worked with Baron Loper, Specialized Land Works, and D and D Tree. And have had projects, multiple projects completed by all three of them. So they are known quantities here in our program. Rad Mulching and Miller Excavation are new to us. Rad Mulching has an excellent reputation elsewhere. And I was told that we would be very happy with any work that his crew would do. He was a high bid, so he'd probably be out of discussion at this point. Uh, Miller Excavation, I have not had any personal experience with them. They are known to John Lilyhog. This is the first time we've had anything from them, and I haven't inspected any work that, you know, they have, which is part of the due process, right? Unfortunately, they didn't get anything to me before to this, today, when they dropped it off at the office this morning. So I haven't done any diligence on them. I haven't hauled, I'm assuming their bid sheet, Commissioner, has names of people that I can contact?
Yeah, there's two job references, or three, Diane Montgomery in Goodrich, Idaho, Lane Jewett from Etna, California, Cliff Hall from Council. He's got a, he says on a handwritten note, mechanical equipment, John Deere one sixty CLC with broom-mounted disc mulcher, Cat three seventeen with boon-mounted disc mulcher.
Where this project is, is over off of Anderson Creek.
Steep.
Well, there's part of it, yeah, and quite a few rocks, which is why the money's so high. I, and I, and I actually, I will say, I kind of enjoyed seeing that Rad Mulching came in with a similar bid that tells me, there's no collusion, that tells me that they know what they're looking at, and they understand the difficulty of the job. So I would say that, so that's nice. Not to, not to see a low bid from him. But I always get nervous on low bids, not that they can't function or be useful. We do have a caveat in the contract where they have to complete one acre completely. I mean, all, all activities on that one acre have to be concluded. The limbing, all of the other things that, in order, so they can't just cherry pick it. And we agree on what that one acre is. We don't take the easiest flat acre on the field. So we do have some things in place to work with a new contractor, to see whether or not they're able to, to do something. Always makes me nervous. We have about a forty, thirty to forty percent success rate with a contractor that bids extremely low.
Yeah, my question to you is, okay, we know this is probably not gonna fly. You don't pay him any money, then you just come back the next year and rebid the whole project?
No, actually, we're, uh, we're able to commence with their services. I come in, we talk, we decide that's what you wanna do, and then we offer the job to the next highest bidder.
We're legally obligated to accept low bid, unless they're, well.
You give them ten percent if they're local.
Well, actually, Oki just told me that's not true.
Really?
So no, we can't do the ten percent bump anymore. Um, no, his, his call is, we have to take low bid, and then if we're, unless they're not in good standing. So should this company not be in good standing, we're obligated for that low bid. We can bring him in again and ask him that question, but.
Well, I think it's always great to take the low bid, unless you know a reason why.
Right.
What I don't know today are the responses of any of these individuals that they've assigned as, as references.
You hear your name, don't you?
That's so funny.
His ears were burning.
His ears were burning.
Mine was.
Yeah.
Firewise, what's the question?
Are we obligated legally to take low bid? And actually, somebody had brought up that.
Is this an RFP?
Yeah.
Yes, you are.
On, on RFPs, but not on a, a contract, or what would it be, RFQ? RFQ.
There are all, there are alternatives to the RFP that allows you to look at other factors other than just low bid. But if you choose the process of putting it out as a request or proposal, you are obligated by the statute to take.
And not give a ten percent bump for locals, is that correct?
It's just flat across the board. That's only on contracts, the ten percent? There's no more ten percent? Is that used to be in code? Used to be in Idaho code years ago, because I know we've settled contracts with that ten percent.
Yeah, see, these, these, I'm looking at.
That was a local thing.
These guys are all within ten percent of each other, except for him. So I guess we have to go with that one.
And, you know, I mean, the out for this guy, I guess, is when he walks it with you.
Yes, almost a thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Nine hundred.
Are you concerned that he may have misunderstood what, what the requirements is?
He's twenty, he's twenty-three thousand less.
Why?
You're not obligated to accept, you're not obligated to accept anything, you put it back out, you feel like, like there's something missing in his bid. But you cannot select a bid price that is above your low bid.
And I think we go ahead and accept it. I mean, he put it out there in good faith, he's gonna meet with you. If he backs out of the contract, we go on to the next one.
Do you want any information that I gleaned from any of my reference calls?
I don't know that it makes a difference unless you wanna put it back out for bid. Brian, you probably should come to the microphone, so we've got. Uh, the question is, is that if we go ahead and accept this, and she gets bad references, do we just go ahead and close out then and rebid it? Or could we go to the second bidder at that moment?
I think you're gonna have to rebid it.
Well, and there is such a thing that this guy is young and energetic and is, can do this. And he'll figure out really quick that he's not making much money off of the deal, but you gotta start somewhere.
And he might wanna get into our pool of contractors.
Yeah, he's left, and that's something you can tell him, you left twenty-three grand on the table. Next time you might wanna sharpen your pencil.
They are abandoning contracts up in Circle C, because they can't get them done for the money that were bid. So it's been a painful season for them. So that, that does occur.
Yep.
And we did get an extension for one year for this. So what I would say is, let's hope this is outstanding work for a bargain. But we also, Brian, we do have in the contract that you have to complete, have to actually complete an acre within a very short timeframe, demonstrating that if you have the skills and equipment associated with it, you're being able to complete that one. That's an area, he's, he's about twenty-three, how long?
Welcome, John. You know anything about Mr. Miller, Jeffrey Miller Enterprises, have you dealt with this? Is he a new young guy, just getting started?
He's from the council area.
It turned out okay. Okay, that was our answer.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Jeff Miller Excavation bid of fifteen hundred dollars an acre for a total of forty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Would you say gonna reward the bid to Jeffrey Miller Excavating? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Your timing was good. Yeah, I definitely need at least one sign. You guys can keep theirs, as long as he signs one, he gets it too, so.
I did, I did, I did.
You must assign his.
Yeah, let's do that.
You know who was actually present?
I'm not special.
Well, we call you special, but.
Well, we're actually ahead of time, I don't know how we did that. There was a lot on this agenda today.
I'm gonna give you a quick update, and then I'll give you a few extra minutes, and we can. I think I had a half an hour, didn't I have a half an hour?
Um, you have five more minutes.
Really?
Eleven fifty.
Then I'll give you, okay, I'll give you five minutes then.
Okay.
We are in the process of completing all of the Firewise projects, grant projects that we have done for the, um, the area. We're just a couple of projects out, and they're being, they're planned and in process. It's not a really cool work out there. The projects have enrolled complete neighborhoods.
Good, 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 good.
Adjoining neighborhoods that have gone over to help their next door neighborhood. Folks agreeing to right-of-way access through their neighborhoods in order to get the work done. And we've done a nice haircut on the Valley County parcel, down by Rivers Crossing, in the Chambers property, and also below Valley View. We've taken, we've took out some nice, um, regen pockets that didn't need to be there. So that's really super. Uh, we still have some good work to do out at Lux Point, and that'll be completed, I don't know, a couple of weeks, sort of in a couple of weeks. Um, we got lucky because contractors are hard to come by, and so we were able to get most everyone managed inappropriately. But it was good money spent, and a really nice.
Yeah, we paid a bunch of them today, and board orders that contracts that year got done, so. Checks will be going out here pretty quick.
Wonderful, there'll be another batch that you see on your desk next week. So there'll be a good opportunity to, for folks to have good faith and know that they put money out now in stream, that they've paid contractors already. Anyway, so, and I just spent an hour and fifteen minutes with Mike, and we're zeroing in on what that job description's going to look like. And it's pretty darn exciting.
Did he say, have to say when he thought he could go out for the job, another month?
He's put it up to his priority list for that type of job, and so he's going to be working, we're gonna be massaging it. But, you know, we're hoping, nothing works very quickly. We're hoping that, you know, as soon as it's ready, means the end of the month.
I'd really like to see it before it goes out, I think we all would.
I don't disagree.
Oh, yeah, we will, hopefully we'll see it.
Absolutely. Well, let's get that on an agenda.
Yeah, and let's, give us like half an hour, Doug, for that one, so we can really dig into that job description.
Super. And then, um, after that, of course, what it takes in order to, you know, it hasn't been great hunting for new potential employees in some sectors. So we're hoping that, because it's not a ton of money, but we're hoping that that's enough to capture individuals that maybe already live here, or are willing to come home, up and live in their second home, or, you know, or in some way inspired to be a part of the project. So we'll see how that rolls. And then, uh.
We might even get somebody that's retired.
I hope not, that's not really what we're looking for, retired. Wouldn't you like someone that would at least do the project for five years?
Oh, somebody that's in the forest service that retired after thirty years, and they started when they were twenty, so, they could be in their fifties.
So it'll be interesting to see whether there's enough interest in drop, we're hopeful. Uh, we're gonna leave it out pretty wide, because organizational communication skills are the top two priorities. And so the rest of it, have a lot of us around.
Well, and I think we have some great places to put that job out too, like School of Forestry, U of I, some of those kind of state guys, I think that, we'll, we'll be surprised.
I will be surprised, because it's a task-heavy job. He's laughing, because he knows what I'm talking about.
Maybe even at Moss.
Yeah, even at Moss, Moss would be, yeah.
Students here have natural resources.
Well, everyone's gonna have an opportunity to, to apply, there's not gonna be any limitations.
What's the official job title we're gonna be?
Well, we're kinda working on it, we're working with wildfire mitigation facilitator or manager. We're kinda, we're taking away the specialist part, because that denotes a, a much lesser position on the forest. So we wanna elevate it enough so that there is enough here, it'll be no different than, say, the grant manager. Or, you know, that there's a level that is listening to you for direction, and is able to effectively work through the system here at the county.
And then there's another position, this one, that's gonna be the actual guy in the ground, correct?
Well, that's kind of a long conversation, and we have, we talked about that today. With what, with what's out there and what is being done already, we're actually maybe trying to think of number two position being an admin.
Oh, okay.
Because getting out away from the desk is a challenge already. And so, and then look and see, what does that grow? Does it grow into another wildfire mitigation person?
So, so what I'm really interested in is natural resources. This person, one part of their job would be wildfire.
This new person?
Yes.
That we're talking about right now?
Yes.
Their whole job would be wildfire.
And then we need that.
So with your natural resources, you're talking more about, like, park development, that kind of stuff?
I don't know, I need to think about it.
Does that, this funding is.
And I wanna see the.
This funding would not support that?
Okay.
Maybe future scope of work, Patrick called me the other day, and he goes, I'm, I'm, I'm coming in with another five hundred. And my goal is next year to come in with another five hundred, so maybe there's a way to redefine, how, how does that help wildfire? How does management of that support wildfire mitigation, so we can be more clever?
Culture has passed a G and A bill through the House, so I'm wondering what that looks like as far as potential funding opportunities also. If it gets through the Senate, I don't know. A G and A, you know, I mean, it could help us in other realms too, so.
Steph, the two hundred and, was it thirty thousand grant you've been living on for quite a few years, is that going away, or is that still out there?
No, we're spending it.
Oh, I know, but is they gonna renew that next year and next year, on top of this five hundred thousand?
Well, we have another two hundred and forty thousand sitting for East McCall that's waiting for the MOU. They're still backed up and understaffed, but the state's not even funny.
So it's just grants that come up, and they come up annually, don't they?
Yes, they're, it's about time for them to announce, call it grant season. They, they want to have first drafts in later than January twentieth or something like that. Probably one of the first big jobs to, because this is something that we work directly with the state.
So this, uh, this initial five hundred, what you don't use of it this year, will it carry over into next year?
Five-year plan, Commissioner.
Five-year?
Right, it's already, in theory, dispersed on a five-year program. And then the next one would be similarly, and then hopefully if there's a third one on top of that. So what happens at the end of five years? You either fund it through one of these additional monies that are coming down, or you find other monies to fund it. Find other grant sources to fund it, or if you find that it's important here at the county to fund. However, that manifests over time. But the idea and the reason for this is to get five years under your belt. So that you are hiring somebody. So that you are hiring somebody knowing that there is five years of funding. Hopefully, there, it demonstrates a need and priority, and it funds continually that side. So it's, it's to give enough support to a pilot program without it falling flat.
Well, he's, he's thinking one point five over the next couple of years?
That's what he's talking about, and he's, you know... He's doing the same thing for Boise County and Adams County. So... Yeah, it's a very unique opportunity.
Was the two hundred and fifty that McCall was writing, I mean, can we write that?
Well, that, you mean the hazard fuel removal project for McCall, or the C W P P one that we're talking about?
One that, um, they were gonna go out and do their own and do marketing with it?
That was a C W P P, and that's the one that they have backed off on. There's supposed to be several reps at our fire meeting tomorrow morning.
That might be a good conversation, though. Can we write that grant and use it for...
It's number one on the agenda tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
So we're gonna address that, the all-hazard, the emergency operating plan. Who the principals are, the emergency manager, how does that all work so that we, uh, we've, it's been a while since we've taken on a large look at how all of those responsibilities are managed.
Are you going to that?
No, I have a doctor's appointment. I'm supposed to get new glasses.
Can you come, Neil?
I would love to come.
This is Ed McCall?
Nine thirty in Donnelly.
Finally at the fires.
I might be able to hit it on the way home for the back half of it.
I, I think it's gonna be a really important one.
Me, too.
We're talking about things that I think are relevant and a lot of questions that you guys have all the time. Real opportunity to start working with all the municipalities to come up with one product that serves all. I'd love to see you gentlemen if you have the time.
Let's see if I can get my eye appointment moving later on the day, so I can get this first, but...
Love to see you. It's also on Zoom, so if for some reason you can't get to it, then, um, you can get on. And add you if you need the Zoom address, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna move on to our last agenda item for the morning. This is an action item. Approve two thousand dollar expense for added research for missing Valley County records. Larry?
So we had a meeting last week with the research team on the F A A road. And, uh, the good news, in fact, I even think I saw Oki smile once, not positive. But they said that the, uh, uh, Boise County had declared that a, a county road two years before the homeowners, um, applied for patent on their property.
You're talking about the F A A road up here?
Yes.
So this is why we were still Boise County?
Yeah.
Ah, interesting.
Yeah, yeah, oh, the, the, talk, this gal, I could sit and listen to her for hours because of all the information. They've done a really good job of rounding up information. She just had a concern, because there was, um, some information, um, and it may never have been there in our vault, but she thinks that she can find that same information up at Boise County, and she'll bring it back and put it in our vault and catch us up on that.
Nice.
That's what the two thousand dollar extra would be for.
Well, I think that's phenomenal. That, that's gonna save us a lot of litigation expense and all that, having that there. That's really cool. Before we were Valley County, we were Boise County.
Yeah.
And our license plate used to be seven R.
Oh, is that right?
Really?
Yeah, I have an old license plate on my shop that says seven R.
Well, she was, she was talking about some of the counties are beginning to hire people just to start from A and go to Z on everything now to try to get completely caught up, and maybe that's a conversation we can have later. But this one is just for two thousand dollars to be added on in order for her to go to Boise County and get that information for the fill-in. And she thinks she'll have the final report ready by the end of October.
We're currently paying that out of the general fund reserve.
Reserve, because I know we had some for Oki's budget, too, but I think that's all been spent?
It, it was in the road department.
That was for, that was for outside counsel to advise us, and we are not spending any of that until this report is...
But didn't we have some, though, in the road department, or we didn't put anything in anywhere else?
Well, it was a B under R S two four seven seven stuff, but... And so you got, well, this is a new budget year, so you've got that money from last year still, correct? Right?
We were expanding this out of the general fund reserve, Mr. Chairman.
Well, either way, it's gonna be...
Need to get it done.
All the same taxpayer in the end, so... I need a motion?
Move to approve the two thousand dollar expense for the added research in Boise County for Missy Valley County record. Records.
Come out of general fund reserve.
Out of general fund reserve.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'm assuming she'll give us a invoice, and then we'll just pay it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
So at this time, we are gonna recess for lunch, and we'll see everyone back here at one o'clock.